Good evening and welcome to Richmond Public Schools School Board Meeting. I now call this meeting to order Tuesday, February twenty-third, two thousand and twenty-one. Madam Clerk, roll call please.
Yes ma'am, good evening. This meeting is being held as an electronic meeting pursuant to and in compliance with Richmond City Council's Ordinance Number Two Thousand and Twenty dash zero nine-three, adopted April ninth, two thousand and twenty, and extended by Ordinance Number Two Thousand and Twenty dash one eight-three, adopted August twentieth, two thousand and twenty, and by Ordinance Number Two Thousand and Twenty dash two-three-two, adopted December fourteenth, two thousand and twenty, and the school board's resolution approved on April twentieth, two thousand and twenty. Simultaneous translation is being provided tonight in Spanish via Zoom, and the meeting notice contained information on how individuals needing translation services could obtain the service. The meeting notice also stated that the meeting would be a virtual meeting and would be livestreamed for the public on the school division's Facebook page, and the link was provided. The meeting notice indicated that the board would not receive public comments in person, however, public comments could be submitted to the school board clerk, and the email address for comments was provided. The agenda of the meeting was posted onto board docs. After roll call, we will state how many board members are participating at the time of roll call. Mrs. Door?
Here, sorry.
Mrs. White?
Present.
Ms. Gibson?
Here.
Mr. Young?
Present.
Mrs. Rizzi?
Here.
Dr. Harris Mohammed?
Present.
Mrs. Burke?
Here.
Mrs. Page?
Here.
And Ms. Jones. Madam Chair, you have eight persons present at roll call time.
Thank you so very much. And Mrs. Nicole Jones will be joining us shortly. The next item on our agenda is approval of the agenda. And Mr. Young, I think we have some names listed.
Madam Chair, Ms. Gibson, then Dr. Harris Mohammed.
Thank you, Ms. Gibson, the floor is yours.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I would like to amend the agenda to include an item to discuss reopening plans for the governor's schools and an item to discuss the General Assembly legislation related to reopening for the two thousand and twenty-two, two thousand and twenty-three school year.
All right, so you have two items to amend that you suggest. Number one, the Walker, Megale Walker Governor's Schools Transportation, and also the legislative information. And I know we received a written report from Mr. Stanley, and I think that was reference to what took place on yesterday. I don't know whether Mr. Stanley is prepared to speak regarding what took place today. So, Mr. Stanley, we're going to come back to you. Are you still there? Mr. Stanley's not on, it's Mr. Ali. Okay. Mr. Camus, do we have any updated information regarding the legislative? Or does someone from the Legislative Committee on the Board have information? Ms. Gibson, do you have information regarding that?
I mean, it could be, it can be, this can be discussed in the agenda item. It doesn't require-
Do you have something to add? Okay, all right. Okay, okay, so we have two items then. I think I saw Dr. Harris Mohammed's name.
Yes, ma'am, madam chair, I was just going to second.
Okay, all right, okay. It has been moved and properly seconded that we amend the agenda. Motion made by Board Member Ms. Kenya Gibson regarding adding to the agenda reopening plans for transportation for Megale Walker, and the second item is a legislative update. Any discussion, questions? Are you ready to vote? All right, Madam Clerk, roll call please.
Ms. Door?
Yes.
Ms. White, Mrs. White, excuse me.
Yes.
Ms. Gibson?
Yes.
Mr. Young?
All right.
Ms. Rizzi?
Yes.
Uh, Dr. Harris Mohammed?
Yes.
Ms. Sheryl, Mrs. Sheryl Burke?
Yes.
Mrs. Don Page?
Yes.
And Ms. Jones. Okay, motion passes.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. All right, colleagues, we would need to place that along with that would go under, not Board Action Items, but it could go under hmm, Board Information. Be mindful that this agenda for tonight is what was deferred from our February sixteenth meeting. And the main two items right now that we were to discuss, that we will be discussing is the F funding. And as you well know, that we will not, tonight, we just want to make sure we have enough information in place to be able to get the fifty-four million dollars, I apologize for that. Fifty-four million dollars, and that we can move forward with how we're going to spend that money later. So where should we add that? That can go on, it wouldn't be action items, so we could add that under, I don't want to say under deferred, so we can add a six-point-oh-one, six-hundred list. Would that work, Madam Clerk?
Yes.
All right, so that means we will have six, it will be Board, what's the word, Discussion Board Business? Is that, Ms. Gibson, is that what you were thinking along the lines? So we will move adjournment down to number seven.
Uh, my preference would be to put the, these items before the deferred items. These are very time-sensitive pieces, and I would prefer to have those earlier in our conversation.
All right, so that means that if the board is in agreement, if it's the will of the board, we can make, do we need a motion to change that, Ms. Lilly, or we can just go ahead and change that?
You've made the motion to amend the agenda, so where you place it is up for where you place it. If you want to do that as number five, and then everything else drops, that's fine.
Excellent. All right, then, great. So number five will be Board Business. Thank you very much. And five-point-zero-one would be the Megale Walker Governor's School Plan for Transportation, and five-point-zero-two would be Legislative Update. And therefore, deferred items from two sixteen-twenty-one will all be numbered as six. Six-oh-one through six-oh-eight.
Madam Chair?
Yes, Mr. Young?
I think we have, uh, thank you. And I think we have two of our colleagues who've requested opportunity to speak. First, Ms. Gibson, then Ms. Page.
All right, thank you. Ms. Gibson?
I'm all set.
All right, Ms. Page?
Yes, Madam Chair, thank you. So for clarity, so these two items that we have added to the amending the agenda, this is for informational purposes, and administration can help us with this. This is not a time-sensitive item. Can the administration speak to that?
Let me ask you this. Would you be so kind to be patient with me this evening, please? We have a full agenda. Is it possible that we can discuss that when we get to those items? Or you want that to take place now?
I mean, that's fine. I just want to get some clarity, because I heard, I think, Ms. Gibson said it's time-sensitive, and I just want to get some clarity regarding that.
Thank you, Ms. Page.
Where we, where we decided to add it on the agenda, but I just wanted some clarity. Thank you.
I appreciate that so much, and this will help us to move the agenda along as well to discuss that at length, if it is time-sensitive or not time-sensitive. I've placed it on the Board Business. It could have been on the Administrative Business. I don't know what the administration has prepared as of this point, but I'll share this with you, my dear fellow Board Members. I'm delighted that we can reach consensus with this at this point. Be mindful that we do have a full agenda and lots of funding to discuss. So, Ms. Page, if you're comfortable with that, would you mind that we discuss the townliness when we get to that part? Because we're not making that decision, we're not voting. It's just informational purposes.
And that's what I want, yes, that's what I wanted to make clear. Thank you.
Let me ask Ms. Gibson. Ms. Gibson, this was not for action purposes, correct?
Um, no, I don't think there's anything we necessarily need to vote on, but we can discuss it when we get to it. Thank you.
Excellent, thank you very much. So it will stay on the Board Business. Thank you, Ms. Page and Mrs. Gibson. All right, we're straight with the agenda. As we move forward now, we have public information, and I believe that Mrs., our attorney, Ms. Lilly, is that, am I correct?
Yes, ma'am.
We're reading, and Mrs. Collins, our clerk, will time. And we have, I believe, what, thirty-eight pages? Is that correct, Ms. Lilly?
Yes, it appears so.
So, colleagues, are you still in agreement with our consistency of two minutes and not any more than two hours? If there's anyone not in favor of that moving forward, please give me a thumbs. I don't like thumbs, ma'am, just, just, just tell me, uh-uh, no. All right, otherwise, we're good to go. Thank you so much, Ms. Lilly. Please proceed with the readings of the public information. Thank you.
Diane Marshall? Once again, I implore you to dismiss the idea of a year-round school starting in two thousand and twenty-one. Enough is enough of the challenges we have had over the last year. Do not add to the scramble of safely opening even in September and of the community to plan for these drastic, short-notice schedule changes. Anna Schink? I'm a resident of the Third District and an RPS parent. I just viewed the proposed calendar for two thousand and twenty-one through two thousand and twenty-three. I'm excited about the prospect of the Jump Start Program for students who have struggled with virtual learning, particularly our English-language learners and students with IEPs. I am concerned, however, by the comments I am seeing online amongst education advocates that this calendar in full may be voted on tonight. The new calendar, in essence, proposes a year-round school calendar. Such a significant change requires the thorough and thoughtful input of all stakeholders. I do hope this online information is inaccurate and that the Board and RPS provide adequate opportunity for input regarding year-round schooling. Katina Harris? She's the President of the Richmond Education Association. I want to first thank the RPS, RPS staff, students, and families who have shown us what resilience looks like during this time. My comments today are concerning the proposed school calendar for two thousand and twenty-one, two thousand and twenty-two. We ask that you keep the current school calendar format for the two thousand and twenty-one, two thousand and twenty-two school year. We realize that major changes in the schedule for families, students, and staff require great planning and detail. Therefore, we ask that you wait until we have further data, especially staff and family input, to make these tremendously important decisions for RPS. Sarah Hendricks? I have looked over the very confusing spring two thousand and twenty-one through two thousand and twenty-three calendars. It does seem improved from what you started with. However, it seems like a logical, excuse me, logistical nightmare to implement so many schedules at the same time. It seems too soon to implement year-round school in any capacity with vacations already planned for summer two thousand and twenty-one. I am absolutely opposed to an August start date for fall two thousand and twenty-one for that reason. Also, where are the surveys that we were told were coming to parents regarding the calendar? Thank you for your consideration. Catherine Lenhart? This appears to be the exact same comment. Summer Schultz? The proposed calendar may be fine for purposes of offering extra support to some students. However, I would argue that regular summer school could just as well serve the five thousand students mentioned. Rushing to change the schedule so drastically so soon will result in loss of both RPS staff and RPS families who will be unable to adjust their lives to the sudden change. Things to keep in mind: This schedule impacts all students and families, not just those targeted for extra support. This schedule impacts all RPS employees, including bus drivers, secretaries, cafeteria staff, many of whom will have no choice of whether they work the jump start or intercession weeks. It will impact their second jobs, childcare, and any personal plans they may have made for this summer and the next year. It impacts teachers who will not be working intercession because of schedule conflicts such as childcare or because they are not qualified in the ages or areas of need, areas needed. Only some RPS teachers will be able to work these sessions, while the rest will not only be earning the stipend, will not only not be earning the stipend, but will now have fragmented availability to work any second job. Neighboring counties are not adopting this schedule this year. Our students will miss out on the summer enrichment opportunities and childcare options offered in the wider community as organizations will go with the traditional summer plan that the majority of regional schools stuck with this year. It impacts the budget in a huge way. While we are still struggling to deal with COVID safety precautions, I would like to see budget figures for this proposal and how much money exists for all staff.
Aye.
Stephanie Lewis? This is a terrible idea, especially since we are currently virtual. My husband and I work full-time, plus shuttling kids around to various activities during the year. We look forward to the chaos-free summers. This is too soon to implement, and quite frankly, low-hanging fruit to compensate for the lack of leadership and planning in getting our children back to the classroom where they belong. Sarah Hunter? My name is Sarah Hunter, and I live and teach in the Seventh District. I think year-round school is a great idea, but not this upcoming year. The students, staff, and families have already been through so much instability and change this year. It is insensitive to create such a drastic change in two thousand and twenty-one. Let us breathe a little before trying something new. We are already drowning in two new curriculums and teaching and learning through a pandemic. If we don't even know what school will look like next year, why add more complication on top of the unknown? I am a product of year-round elementary school and have great memories of fun and engaging intercession courses that were not remediation-based. If year-round school is considered for next year, I hope the kids get an option for intercession classes that are creative and exciting instead of more hours of remediation time. L. Drake? I am one thousand percent in support of the year-round school option. I feel like this is long overdue for RPS. I feel like, I feel it would not only provide more learning time to set our students on the right track, but also allow for the opportunity to gather up and advance some that have fallen due to this pandemic. I feel that in the long run, the benefits of year-round school will far outweigh any other options. This is a very strong action that will strengthen our students. Also, it gives the opportunity to remain consistent and slow the pace of learning instead of cramming so much information into our children. Allowing opportunity for a more well-rounded education with less burnout because school would then be more routine as opposed to taking months off and then going back to school to review, relearn, reteach, and revive. There are built-in blocks for breaks to prevent burnout. Year-round school provides consistency, a chance at real learning, and not just teaching to the test. It also keeps a routine so that our children remain structured and functioning by maintaining educational standards minus standardized testing as a marker for educational growth, socialization, and psychological support. I conclude with reiterating my support of year-round school as the best option for long-term success. Catherine Schink? Adopting this year-round calendar is delusional at best and gives no one time to recoup from two thousand and twenty. I don't even have the mental energy to explain this, as I have already done so in a previous, in previous public comments. I only wish the Board would listen to its constituents instead of pushing their, through their own political agendas, because this schedule is not it. You need to wait, you need to use your brain, and you need to listen. You're taking advantage of people who are too tired to keep fighting you, and you're going to lose a lot of people if you try to push this through. It's irresponsible and insane. Jerome Legions? When I spoke to the school board about starting a foundation called Embrace Carver Elementary Foundation, Ms. Gibson looked in my direction and said, "Don't let us off the hook." In two thousand and nineteen, as part of the rezoning to agreement, it was voted to make Carver and Bellevue Schools magnet schools. As I go over the budget, it appears that nothing has been allocated to begin that process. What is more disturbing is that no conversations have been had about what a magnet school would look like. During the rezoning process, I coined the term BASH, which stands for Basics, Arts, Sciences, and Humanities. Carver and Bellevue could become models as to what works when we stop focusing on MIGDU in the education process and raise the bar. We know what, we know it works when communities engage with schools in their communities with examples being Holton, Franklin Military, Governor's Schools, Community, Open, Benford. Did the term "all" of this summer and the Black Lives and Black Lives Matter not teach us anything? Broken promises create broken dreams. Langston Hughes asked the question, "What happens to a dream deferred?" I don't need to remind you of your campaign promises or why you were hired. Put your skill sets together and keep your vote alive. I will be glad to chair a committee to create a plan of action. Burwell Robinson? I have looked over the very confusing spring two thousand and twenty-one, two thousand and twenty-three calendars. It does seem improved from what you started with. However, it seems like a logistical nightmare to implement so many schedules at the same time. It seems too soon to implement year-round school in any capacity with vacations already planned for summer two thousand and twenty-one. I'm absolutely opposed to an August start date for fall two thousand and twenty-one for that reason. This is from a Fifth District resident. I like the idea of starting mid-August and having the jump start in July for students who need it, along with the boost as needed. This is better, in my opinion, than everyone starting school in July and going year-round until June. I think this could help students who need the extra time to get their educational needs met, where both the parents and teachers are in agreement. If the jump start and boost times are extra and optional for teachers, that would be ideal. I think we could have some really great educators step up to help during the jump start and boost times, and they will need to be compensated appropriately for that. I don't think it should be mandatory for teachers to do those days. Each school can decide based on need, and if some students or teachers need to go to different schools during the jump start or boost times, that could be, that can be arranged as needs are determined and coverage needed. And lastly, all school buildings will need appropriate upgrades if anyone is going to be inside them in July and August. Allison Verden? She wanted to make her comments known to the school board. I am concerned, but I also see the importance of making changes to our school calendar. A few adjustments that I think would be beneficial are as follows. Number one, the first month of school is extremely tiresome for both teachers and students, and per the newly proposed schedule, the first break is not until November. When we start school in September, the fall break is very much needed at that point. My fear is that by pushing school back into August, we will be, we will be extremely exhausted. I will recommend a short, maybe two-day break or teacher workdays in October or late September to alleviate this exhaustion. Two, virtual schooling has shown me that ample planning time can be given to teachers within our contracted hours in order to aid in that burnout feeling. I have been able to successfully complete all of my planning, meetings, additional workload within the timeframe much more regularly than when in person. This means that I believe teachers should receive the same amount of planning time when in person. I am not sure how to make this happen, whether it be longer humanities classes, maybe an hour or even an hour fifteen minutes, shorter school hours, less required meetings, more bus and lunch monitors to allow for actual time at the end of the day, or some other creative solution. I feel like by having my planning time uninterrupted and with enough hours to complete the work, I am a happier and better-prepared teacher. I should not have to come into work an hour early and leave an hour late, both of which are not within my contracted hours, therefore not compensated. This will help, this will help with the happier teacher community. I know this, thank you. Robin Keegan? I am not opposed to a year-round school calendar, but I am opposed to it for this coming school year. I have several concerns about the proposed school calendar. Number one, timing. It is not the time. Pulling this huge overhaul on the community is too much. There is not enough time to pull all the working pieces together. You haven't surveyed the teachers or the community. Two, funding. This proposal has no sustainability. You cannot guarantee that the state will support this after the one-time funding runs out. We do this for a few years, upend everything, and then what? Three, there are other options. Why do we continue to go for the big, giant, bold changes in the system? These decisions tend to be badly planned out, and we are left doing twice the work because someone didn't think it through. Why not build a robust summer school this year? Give teachers and families a break. Have you forgotten the "with love" part? We did everything you asked us during a pandemic. We did our jobs and more. I love my students, but love isn't about self-sacrifice, because that's abuse. I love my students enough that they too need a break. They need to be free to play and see their friends. Give them that this summer. Provide the necessary resources for those students you have identified, but let those of us who need it take it. Kendall Williams? Why should it be okay at all that some five thousand high-priority students do not get a Thanksgiving break and only get three weeks of summer? Have we forgotten what being a child is supposed to look like? Or is the data more important? Please think about this deeply before moving forward. Sarah Revel? I've just reviewed the draft that I saw just by happenstance via Facebook today for a year-round schedule. I am a parent of two RPS students, and I am so proud of Southampton Elementary and all of the teachers who have stepped right up to the challenges of this year. I know my com- okay, I know my comment is after one P.M., so it will not be read at the meeting tonight. However, I feel very strongly that it will be a disservice to attempt this or any year-round schedule in the coming school year. Instead of trying to pack in more days for teachers to fill, I would like to see creative options being proposed that will help high-risk kids or those who need or want more educational opportunities through the summer. Not a one-size, not a one-size-fits-all, heavy-handed, last-minute attempt to get our kids in school more of the time. And it is certainly not something that should be planned at this point in the year, even to be considered without thorough parents and teacher input. At no point have I received a survey or even notification that this is being seriously considered. I do not feel that spending weeks of the summer in school, nor going weeks on end without significant breaks, is going to do anything to help my kids make up for any educational deficits from the past year. It will only serve to make them and me less motivated, more stressed, and more defeated regarding school than they already are. It will take years to make up for the impact of this pandemic on education. So can we please approach it thoughtfully and take the long view here? Is there data showing that so much extra seat time is going to help make up for this year's losses? Moreover, I do not feel that more school is the highest priority for our family at this time. We are exhausted, and we need our summer more than we have, more than we ever have before. RPS families and teachers plan their time in advance, and many of us have made our summer plans. RPS families and teachers plan their time in advance and many of us have made our summer plans. Thank you. Bridget Pryor. I am the parent of a kindergartner at Patrick Henry. I beg of you, please, please do not elongate the school year this year. I think it's a great idea to have year round school when they are in person, but this year, absolutely not. School has been more hurtful than helpful this year. The amount of screen time my six year old has had, has is terrible for him. After the hardest school year of many of their lives, for goodness sakes. Allow them to play and be out, be kids outside, be with kids outside their age. More online school is a terrible idea. David Lefkowitz. I write to express my concerns regarding the current proposal for a year round school calendar. While I agree that RPS and the citizens of Richmond more generally need to take a creative and prompt. Action to address the challenges many RPS students face. I doubt that this proposal provides the best path forward. Instead, we should adopt a more nuanced and flexible approach that targets those most in need. And that better approximates the optimal schedule and learning experience. For all RPS students, teachers, staff, and parents. The proposed calendar will dramatically reduce many RPS students. Opportunities to participate in extracurricular activities. These include various summer camps offered by the city of Richmond. The Y, the Jewish Community Center, various churches in Richmond and the surrounding counties. Spark, Viz Arts, Swim Clubs, AAU Basketball Camps and tournaments and other organizations. Many of these camps also contribute significantly to childhood learning and development intellectually, for example. Natural science. Physically, for example, swimming, field sports. And emotionally, for example, fostering independence and team building. Moreover, they contribute to students' success in school by providing children with a change of scenery. And schedule that allows them to recharge and refresh their enthusiasm for in school learning. Oh, and least, unless we forget campus fun and surely we owe our children some fun. A year round calendar will also interfere with students' opportunities for deepening their religious identity. Again, the primary vehicle here is camp, whether it be at a local house of worship or a retreat. Might these take place during the breaks in RPS calendar? Perhaps in some cases, but many religious camps serve children from school districts other than RPS. And they are unlikely to alter their schedule to accommodate the needs for one school district. Thank you. Maya Lavali. I just reviewed the proposed year round calendar and want to commend you. My son is a student at Patrick Henry School of Science and Arts and we love the year round model. My only feedback would be. To consider keeping the traditional Thanksgiving weekend break and shifting the additional time off to October for a fall break. This would space out the time off and allow families to travel off season. Please feel free to contact me if you have questions. Tanya Francis. I am sending this correspondence today with a heavy heart. Although I am glad we decided to let Mr. Jason Camaras continue for another four years. To assist in leading RPS into the future of historic change. As I listened to the remarks of the board members, some I agree with, some I didn't, but understood it was. But understood it was one comment in particular made by Board Representative Stephanie Rizzi that was unsettling. As a parent, I was able to guide my children's education through open enrollment and specialty schools. Ms. Burke, you know that Franklin Military Academy is part of my heart. And since my son stepped in that school in 2014. I have fought to change the image of RPS as well as Franklin Military Academy. When my son was admitted, it had the image of being a reform school, which it has never been. It has always been, it has always had admissions criteria which took into account. Testing scores, academic scores, and behavioral record in order to select students for admittance. All specialty schools have this criterion and were not singled out in the remarks made by Ms. Rizzi. In the future, I would like all individuals to understand that Franklin Military isn't an elite school, nor is it a reform school. What Franklin is, is a family of teachers, staff, students, administrators, and parents who nurture. Educate and guide these cadets to be successful adults. It uses the military structure to aid the students in their path of enlightenment. Which has led students to military service, higher education pursuits, and employment. Since, since it was established as the first public military school in the nation. It has maintained its commitment to make the next leaders of the United States. I would like for this to be read and entered into the record of the next school board meeting. To clear up any misperceptions about Franklin Military Academy. And if anyone still has a question about Franklin Military. Thank you. Faith Alejandro. I'm writing in support of the proposed calendar. I think it hits a good balance of a safe, of a safe in person reopening in the fall. Without rushing to do so in the spring for most students while meeting the needs of our students with the most needs. Giving in person instruction to IEP and ESL students makes good sense. Though I hope it can be done with the least amount of disruption to their teaching assignments. I am glad to see that students eligible for jumpstart and boost programs will receive focused support. In smaller ratios throughout the year rather than just in the summer. I am hopeful that the proposed calendar offers, also offers most teachers much needed. Longer and more frequent breaks to rest in between sessions. All to prevent teacher burnout. While I am sure the loss of a full ten week summer is going to require an adjustment. I think a seven week summer is more than enough. And is about the time that I hear a lot of parents wishing school would begin anyway. I do also hope. The school board and the city continue to work with community partners to offer ample childcare support during these new. Break periods as well, as well, so that working families are supported. I'm a firm believer that addressing the needs of our most vulnerable students first helps to lift up everyone. It's an investment I'm happy for us all to make in these formative learning years. I'm curious only about the backup plan for serving students eligible for support. Beginning in July if facilities aren't ready for their safe attendance by then. I would hope some additional supports like tutors and other resources could be put in place for them, for example. Thank you for prioritizing their needs and for this much advanced planning so that we all can prepare. Megan Petzold. I'm a third grade teacher in the fourth district. This year has been filled with testing. Map for reading and math, one on one piles. Eye ready for reading and math, imagined learning, and now district mandated interim assessments have begun. As of today for all subjects. This doesn't even include the state mandated PBAs in place of SOL tests for science and social studies. For some grades. While those are not like the assessments mentioned above, they still require their own level of time and care. That list also doesn't include the curriculum standard assessments. For each subject that are completed through the entire year to assess and monitor student growth. Why is the district requiring interim assessments where there has been more than enough assessments? There have been more than enough assessments this year. The kids and the teachers need the time that testing is consuming to learn and grow. This needs to change. Thank you for your time and consideration. Jennifer Davidson. Our schools have been in a state of disrepair for years. And now we are in a pandemic where we need better air conditioning units to keep students safe. Instead of focusing on year round school, we need to focus on things like getting rid of mold. And rats and keeping our students healthy, healthy and safe. Second priority should be paying our teachers what they deserve so that RPS stays competitive with other districts. Andy Davidson. He's a Richmond, they are a Richmond resident and grad student in art at VCU. And the husband of one of the teachers in your school system. I understand that the school board is currently considering transitioning to year round schooling. With some but not all students returning to in person learning despite the ongoing COVID nineteen pandemic. I am writing to provide you feedback on this proposal and my perspective as a concerned citizen. Simply put, while I understand that COVID has thrown a huge wrench into every aspect of our lives, schooling included. I do not think it is in the student's best interest to either transition to a year round schooling. Or, or to return to in person learning. The pandemic and the shift to virtual learning has definitely impacted the way students learn generally for the worse. Which I have observed even in the college classrooms that I teach. Many people simply don't learn that well digitally, digitally, and this is a valid concern. Because of this, moving to the year round schooling does not, does seem like a tempting fix for this problem. By giving teachers more time to teach and students more time to learn. I understand that a return to in person learning is also tempting for many parents. Because they have jobs too and may not have the time or energy at the end of the long day. To supervise their children and help facilitate online learning. Nonetheless, as. Of the time of this email, only approximately a fifth of the population in Virginia has received the COVID vaccine. This is low to begin with, but it is also unlikely that this figure includes many children because they are considered low risk. Additionally, many faculty and staff have just, have had difficulties. With being vaccinated themselves during vaccine, due to vaccine shortages. While children. Was that time, Ms. Collins?
Yes.
Thank you. Board members, oh, excuse me, Meredith Thompson. Please remove the eight million dollars. To move to a year round calendar schedule from the Essar funding proposal. Alternatively, approve funds for a robust summer school program to address academic learning losses. Please ask the administration to utilize their one point five million dollar Office of Engagement. To conduct a comprehensive deliberative process for engagement. To determine if a year round schedule is best for the children, families and staff. And faculty of RPS. Attempting to hastily implement such a significant change within the next four months. Will cause unnecessary upheaval in an already challenging time for teachers and families. And could jeopardize the district's ability to complete the significant work required to allow for a safe return to in person learning. Please create and release publicly a concrete strategic plan for reopening with a timeline. Of required initiatives necessary to achieve that goal. This challenge must be our sole focus to ensure success. That is keeping the main thing, the main thing. Please increase the funding for new custodial positions to twenty seven. To bring RPS into compliance with the mandatory COVID cleaning requirements. Please hire an independent licensed professional engineering firm to evaluate facility needs. Prior to investing in bipolar ionization technology as recommended by the CDC. This should have been done eight months ago. Taking advice from a vendor is not a comparable approach nor due diligence. The Essar funds are the perfect opportunity for the administration to make significant gains. On years and years of deferred maintenance that could be critical in creating a safe learning environment for our children. Let's not waste this opportunity on flashy headlines for those with political aspirations. Cynthia Green. I'm writing in opposition to the idea of year round school, especially for this coming school year. The money should be spent on buildings, bringing the air ventilation up to standard. I teach in one of those, these buildings. The air quality is awful. If you follow what the CDC recommends, then absolutely air filtration should be on the list. The heating AC units are old and full of mold. The bathrooms are substandard with issues occurring almost daily. The classrooms are too small to assure proper social distancing. To take these funds to fund year round school now is ridiculous. To try to push, to try and push this after the year of upheaval is just wrong. Let us get back in the fall on a normal schedule with buildings that have been improved. Let us have a year of just normal school. Kaisha King. I'm a third grade teacher in RPS. I believe this board needs to state the mission and vision. There is no mission, there is no vision posted anywhere on RPS to know the vision. For RPS at the beginning of each school board meeting. Where there is no vision, there is no hope. George Washington Cabra. The mission and vision would stand as a focus and reminder of our purpose, the future. I hear school board members that were here before the new members speak out on the past. You are one new board and it saddens me to see and hear division. The ways of the past cannot change our current or future school division. The new members are true assets to RPS. It is time to put aside your own personal agendas and focus on a safe reopening. I am confused to why we can't focus on year round schooling once we reopen schools in a safe manner. As a teacher of RPS, I would love to feel. As if this administration listens to the people in the trenches, the ones who are doing the work, the teachers. I do not believe this is true at the moment, but it can happen. We were at, we were asked our opinion about the year round schools after the proposal was made. But the survey did not directly ask us, are we for or against it? It seemed more like a way to bait teachers. It is disheartening that teacher voice is not a priority. We will not be silenced. If we are silenced, then how can students be heard? When I talk to my teacher friends, we question a lot. Can we master something before adding more on teachers' plates? Will there be a hybrid model when school reopens? Why were intent forms and transfer affairs already done before teachers honestly know anything about? Year round schools being a part of the plan? Will there be, and will there be inspection papers about H vax?
Time.
Thank you. Jenny, Jeannie Boker. I am writing to ask that you delay implementing a year round calendar and remove the year round calendar from the Essar funding proposal. Though I love the idea of year round school. There are many reasons why now is not the time to shift to a year round calendar, including. Staff and students need a normal summer to recover from this traumatic year. And deserve a return to normalcy as we transition back to in person transition. If focus on closing the gap this summer. With longer delays potentially in buildings lacking proper AC. May feel unduly punitive to the five thousand kids offered spots. In the Orwellian named boost and jump intercessions. This is short notice for the entire RPS community to adjust various work, childcare, travel, and other plans. Putting RPS on a calendar that differs from surrounding counties or from regional schools on such short notice is stressful. Especially as teachers may have children attending school in different counties. Using one time Essar funding to pay for year round school is problematic. Because the district will not have the fund, these funds available to fund year round schools in perpetuity. Would it be better to use this Essar funding in other ways as permitted? Under the regs to focus on resources available within the school buildings for students? Is the focus on planning and advocating for year round schools detracting from the enormous task of preparing for reopening? Harnessing the administration's resources to frame the vote for year round schools. As the one and only way to address education inequities resulting from the pandemic could take time away. From developing an effective reopening dashboard. Above all, I am nervous about outreach regarding this plan. As with rezoning, the administration has proposed a plan that has. Massive consequences for the lives of families. Thank you. Cassandra Albert, I am writing. She has, it appears the same comment. And so I will finish the comment that I didn't finish before. Above all, I am nervous about the outreach regarding this plan as with rezoning and rezoning. The administration has proposed a plan that has massive consequences. For the lives of families that have the fewest resources to adapt to those changes. It has done so without doing the outreach necessary to engage everyone. In the middle of a pandemic, it is not the time to knock on every door with information about the proposed calendar change. Then it is not time to change the calendar. Lastly, what are the consequences of voting to fund a year round calendar? Less than a week after the administration released. less than a week after the administration released its survey about the calendar? Amanda Reisner. When voting for the budget, please do not include money to be allocated for year-round school. I feel like it's always the same critique the last three years. We haven't vetted it enough. It's being pushed out in a rushed manner, and only a select few have had any say. Instead, I want to return to a classroom that has a working sink and HVAC system. I want a school where the ceiling tiles might not fall on our heads or water doesn't drip on the floor, causing us to slip and fall. The list could go on all night. But what it boils down to is what I want to invest in making sure our kids walk into a building that screams they are valued and safe. It's long overdue. After that is handled, then maybe we can spend next year discussing, and I mean truly discussing with everyone, a year-round calendar and one that makes sense for our families and teachers. Emily Phillips. I support the proposed year-round calendar beginning in the summer of 2021. So many students have fallen behind and are in need of any extra support that we can offer them. Change is hard, but now is the perfect time to capitalize on the additional federal resources available to support this shift. Additionally, I urge the board to take immediate action to approve the funding request for the capital improvements that need to be made in order for our students to safely for our students to safely return to school. Thank you. Steven Strauss. I'm an RPS teacher and 5th district resident. I support tabling any action on a year-round calendar until 22, 23. Our attention right now should be on ensuring a safe reopening in September and developing an equitable virtual option for families that wish to remain virtual. Tabling the implementation of a major calendar shift would allow for more community outreach and input in developing this proposal and the supports within it. I taught in a district that used this model. I am not opposed to year-round, but do not support its implementation next year. Kristen Dutton. Please insist that the administration provide regular, clear, current progress reports on how RPS will be opening for fall 2021. We get weekly emails about the handful of students and staff across the district who have COVID and how most of them have not been on campus all year. Yet we get no concrete communication about building improvements and reopening plans. Meanwhile, we watch the private schools continue to operate with no large outbreaks. We watch neighboring counties send their students back. We watch the achievement gaps widen. And all we are able to do is watch and wait and hope that all the years of deferred maintenance don't keep us from reopening in the fall. So you can understand why we are frustrated that suddenly we're seeing the administration focus all their effort on pursuing year-round school for the upcoming year when we have no reason to believe we'll even be back in school at all. What they want to spend 8 to 10 million of CARES Act funding for a calendar rather than making sure our schools have functional sinks and windows or offering targeted enrichment programs to kids struggling the most or ramping up free preschool so that the achievement gaps won't develop in the first place. The only thing worse than virtual school is year-round virtual school. Please encourage this administration to focus on the single most important issue facing Richmond's students, getting back to school in person this fall and communicating their progress regularly. Karen Call. I am writing in hopes that you will consider what these kids have gone through this year when deciding on extending the school year. For the record, I am open to year-round schools, but not now, not like this. Everyone, I mean, everyone is so tired, the kids, the teachers, the parents. Please let us try to have a fun summer. We are barely hanging on, just trying to get through to the end of May. Please, thank you for your time. Adam Tignor. I'm a parent in the 3rd district. I am thankful for the board members that allow discussion and solicitation of input on the year-round calendar, even if this doesn't happen this year. A big proposal needs discussion, input, and appropriate time to implement, not tabled or dismissed. Last week's board meeting made the catch phrase, "We must go slow to go fast come true." Too much of that meeting last week was taken up by asking the same questions over and over again, by requesting data that is in the appendix of the presentations, by micromanaging the administration to the point of arguing over standard survey classification questions and whether the administration can ask their own teachers for feedback. Of course, they should. Let's spend time discussing substantively the major issues before us so that we can make the best RPS for our children and by remembering we are all in this together. Deondra Harrison. I'm writing to you to celebrate and recognize that the RPS school board has a distinction this cycle that the majority of its membership is made of women, specifically Black women. I am very proud of this representation. At the last meeting, I was very concerned about the microaggressive and racist comments left by several community members directed towards Dr. Harris Muhammad, Ms. Rizzi, Ms. White, when they spoke out or asked questions. I was also concerned about how easily frustrated the superintendent or other members appeared to become visually when responding or listening to them. I believe that you all have each other's respect, but at times your faces and words reflect another narrative to the community. I ask that the board publicly voted on a resolution or statement that expresses a standard for public decorum and support for these members as respected equals. In addition, against the perception that they are too arrogant, not team players, or unqualified. Many times, they are just requesting information they should already have. I hope you proactively take steps to set a community culture of respect for Black voices by the end of March as a body of community leaders. This is a perception that many Black people have to struggle against in their workplace daily. There will always be people that perpetuate anti-Black rhetoric. But I think proactively shaping the narrative of how RPS values Black people and their voices is simple to do and worth the time. After all, each member represents the voices of hundreds of people and should be valued respectfully. Tejas Patel. My family does not support a calendar change for students this year. RPS needs to concentrate its efforts on safe reopening. Given how little has been accomplished on the last year during school closure, we doubt RPS's ability to focus on both reopening and a schedule shift. This idea isn't boldness, it's hubris. While we have supported virtual school, we are concerned about this pattern continuing, not because of the number of COVID cases, but because of the inadequate effort to modify the schools themselves. Another semester out will do far more harm than letting the kids reset during July and August away from their desks and Chromebook. Focus on reopening. Use the funds for tutoring during the year for kids who need it. Use the funds to repair our infrastructure between now and September. Discuss the calendar change for 2022, 2023. But for God's sakes, focus on getting kids safely back to school first. Clara Respa. My family does not support the calendar change this year. Please use the funding to prepare schools to reopen safely, to repair neglected infrastructure, and to provide year-round tutoring to those who need it. Shannon Dowling. Our children have been out of school for almost a year now. Two-thirds of RPS buildings are over 50 years old. They have many issues that need to be addressed to make them safe for our students and teachers. We still don't have answers. We need to ensure our buildings have had upgrades in line with the following: air quality. Ashray has made several recommendations for improving indoor air quality, increased ventilation for restrooms, increased outside air, hint window replacements, increased air filtration, MERV 13 minute, I guess, 13-minute filters and systems that can support them on a room level, portable air cleaners, damper evaluations to control flow between rooms, temperature and humidity control. We should consider installing air quality sensors. Two, plumbing. Kids are disgusting and they touch each other. We need to make sure that all our sinks work. We need to make sure that all of the other plumbing needs are met. We should investigate converting fixtures, doors, and toilet seats to be automatic and touch-free. Elevators. Oops. I'm sorry. Elevators, we need to protect our most vulnerable populations. We need to ensure portable HEPA air cleaners in our school elevators. Cleaning, we need to recognize the additional load our custodians and staff will have to undertake to keep spaces clean. We need to ensure enough custodians in all of our buildings. We should consider mobile apps and QR codes for better custodial communications to track timing and frequency of cleaning. We need to consider spacing schedules at the middle school and high school levels and especially classes like art and music to ensure cleaning between student groups. We deserve to know how this is going to work. Roofs, we need to ensure all roofs are tight and not leaking. Thank you. Shannon Hodges. I'm an RPS parent and staff member. While I feel that moving to a year-round school is a good move for RPS, I do not feel that now is the timing to do it. Getting buildings ready for in-person learning is much more important and time-sensitive. Can RPS currently answer these questions? How will you ensure all bathrooms are stocked and unlocked when we are in person? Will teachers still be expected to buy their own paper, towels, hand sanitizer, disinfectant, et cetera? What happens if a teacher tests positive? As a parent, what steps do I take if my child is positive or we are under quarantine? How do you decide which teachers go back in person and which are still virtual? How will transportation work if we are following CDC guidelines? How can you space students apart in some of our smaller buildings? What has been done already to the buildings? What is the timeline for getting buildings ready? Those are just a few questions I have. It would be nice to have a user-friendly document that provides staff and parents with more details about the changes you are asking them to decide upon. Being able to provide comments this way is a nice, but maybe a forum where people can ask questions and get answers would be even better. I feel like I fill out surveys without knowing enough to make a good decision sometimes. Teachers have to submit lesson plans. Why can't the district submit a user-friendly get our schools ready for healthy learning plan? Alan Sturgens. First, I want to thank you for your service to our community. I just want to say that I would like you to consider the families who are struggling the most and act based on their needs. We will adjust based on what is desired by the struggling majority. Thank you again. Rebecca Field. I'm both a teacher and RPS parent and parent of RPS students. When I think of school in early August and late June, I picture myself and my students in a classroom with no air conditioning, let alone air circulation, trying to focus on anything but the sweat pouring down our backs. It would be miserable for us. Instead of benefiting our kids, it would punish them. My students are exhausted. Instead of a major upheaval after such a difficult year, building infrastructure so students can safely and effectively use the technology they finally have after enduring such a long deficit of access to digital resources. There is an enormous task ahead of us, but my students need to heal first. They deserve well-equipped buildings, digital tools, and access to reach equity. Your choice about reopening with actual, your choice is about reopening with actual love. Love means prioritizing mental health and counseling, creating healthy learning environments, and promoting access to 21st century technology rather than forcing at-risk, exhausted students back into unhealthy classrooms. I am tired of hearing the word resilience thrown around as if it is an admirable attribute. Resiliency is something that my students have been forced to have throughout their childhood. My kids need to be cared for, not made to endure more because of decisions made for them. Year-round schools and dilapidated, funding-starved schools will show our Black and Brown students how little we care about them. I urge you to postpone huge calendar changes until our buildings are safe and our students have had a chance to heal. Thank you for making the difficult decisions. Margaret Cook. I support the proposed calendar. As the child of a student who would likely participate in the boost and extra academic support it provides to these specifically identified students, it makes me feel hopeful about the future in RPS. We have felt very much ignored, left behind, unseen, and unheard during the pandemic due to my daughter's special needs. The proposed calendar makes me feel like students, like my daughter, who need extra support and have not been able to engage with virtual learning in any meaningful way will be cared for in a way they haven't been since schools closed. Robert Keegan, excuse me, Robin Keegan, I'm sorry. Moving forward with a year-long calendar is not, for next year is not the time. As a teacher, I am concerned that we are talking about a huge calendar change this year when we have not ironed out all that we need to get done to these buildings to get these buildings ready to open for intercession that is supposed to begin in June. June is four months away. We have not engaged our families and community fully. Our families have unique experiences, and this calendar could impact them greatly. If students are not selected for intercession, then families will have to pay for childcare. Have our all, have our all area daycares, not just the YMCA, been included in the discussion because their ability to adapt is critical? The pandemic has made engagement very difficult and will take time. Have you explained to families how intercession will look? Where will intercession be located? How will students be transported? Who will be their teachers? Where are the details for intercession? Have they been discussed and thoroughly planned? These details will matter to parents. Use the 8 million tag for the calendar to plan a robust summer school. Let the community have familiarity this summer. We don't need more upheaval. This proposal has no sustainability. You cannot guarantee that the state will support this after the one-time funding runs out. Let's use the 8 million to build a robust summer school. Why is the model necessary? The research on this model is inconclusive. Please look at all the research. This plan does not address the academic needs of all students. It addresses only 5,000 students pre-K to 12th grade. We have 25,000. These decisions tend to be badly planned out, and we are left doing twice the work because someone didn't think this through. Thank you. Antonia Vassar. I am the parent of a second grader at Fisher Elementary in the 4th district and am writing to state my family's full support for the year-round calendar proposal sent out by RPS. Year-round school calendars will be much easier for families who have caregivers who work outside the home, and children will have more consistency in learning while also having much-needed breaks spaced throughout the year. I also appreciate the virtual option for families who might still need it next year. Starting as soon as possible with the new calendar makes perfect sense. Because of the pandemic, the return to school in fall 2021 was never going to be business as usual. Thank you for championing these sorts of necessary bold changes. Emma Reedy. RPS should concern itself with executing a plan for safely reopening instead of a change to the calendar. You cannot reopen with love if you cannot reopen with the proper facilities upgrades. It is a failure of the board and administration that these upgrades were not started months ago. If student and staff health was the primary driver for remaining virtual this year, why is it not the primary focus of reopening? Stuart Thompson. Let's talk about the survey that was put out 30 minutes before the last board meeting on the proposed year-round calendar. First, there is no mention in the survey that the proposed calendar is a change to a year-round schedule. Secondly, of the eight questions on the survey, only two ask for any feedback on the proposed calendar. The rest of the questions are demographic. The rest of the questions are demographics. Thirdly, the survey cannot be can be completed. The survey can be completed, excuse me, by anyone with the link and as many times as the person wishes to complete it. Surely no conclusions can be reached by the dirty data derived from this survey. Instead of investing time and energy into a PR campaign about year-round school. Please direct the administration to pull all their efforts. Into a publicly available fall reopening plan with a detailed line item budget. Status updates, action times with completion timeline with. Action times with timelines to completion. Postpone any further discussions about a year-round calendar. Change until a thoughtful deliberative process of engaging stakeholders for feedback, especially those. Who have been historically been under underserved, excuse me, underrepresented has been completed. Please do not jeopardize a safe in-person reopening and the significant work. Required by hastily implementing the proposed year-round calendar to begin in five months. Instead, invest in as many achievable building improvements. Air quality upgrades as possible and hire the twenty-seven new janitorial staff needed to meet the minimum COVID requirement. Catherine Schink, please wait to make any major changes to our school calendar until twenty-two, twenty-three. Until the twenty-two, twenty-three school year at the earliest. It is irresponsible and moving forward will cause chaos and only add to the frustration and burnout we were all feeling. Additionally, I urge anyone listening to read the document Mr. Cameras referenced in his direct email on the twenty-second. Because it does not provide any strong evidence that year-round schools is overall a good idea. He pulled out three lukewarm quotes from the one hundred and thirty pages that do not represent the document as a whole. Especially right now, I believe this change would be to our detriment. I urge the board to please listen to us and vote against changing the calendar this year. Katie Nolan, I am firmly against the school board's motion to change a year-round, change to a year-round school model. And I'm asking that you please remove the year-round school schedule from the budget approval for tonight. Here's why. One, you have not provided a timeline, action items, status updates, or any plans detailing how you plan to run the schools when they are open. Simply put, you have not shown the public that you have a path to safely reopening the schools. With the use of the emergency federal funding. We get daily emails about how many meals have been distributed. Who in the RPS community has tested positive for COVID but hasn't been on the school ground since last March? And which teacher deserves a shout-out? Yet we know nothing about what concrete plans are being made to ensure that our children will ever be able to return to school and return to normalcy. All other schools are operating just fine with simple proper precautions in place. Namely masking, distancing, and a lot of hand washing, sanitizing. No large budget approval needed. Two, a sudden switch to year-round schooling will ensure that RPS loses loses many teachers. To other schools who remain on a traditional calendar. We cannot afford to be scrambling to find great teachers if we are low on staff. Our class sizes will increase. This is an incredibly troubling idea because if our class sizes increase. Not only will it be more difficult to maintain proper distancing, but the extra time in the classroom will be a waste. Because we all know that bigger class sizes mean more independent work time rather than concentrated work with a teacher. If the point of switching to a year-round school to year-round schooling is to help with the learning loss that has occurred. Then losing great teachers and potentially having to increase class sizes will have the exact opposite effect. Please use the Esser funds to safely, thank you. Lars and Kimberly Bolton. We are writing to urge this body to move forward with a concrete plan for reopening schools in person that does not hinge on the implementation. Of a year-round school calendar. While we believe that a year-round model does have merit and could be properly implemented. With a thoughtful plan and time for stakeholders to adapt. The upcoming twenty-twenty-one, twenty-twenty-two school calendar is not the time. In order to successfully pivot to a year-round calendar, time is needed to allow parents to adequately plan for this dramatic change. We need time for community support, daycares and vacation camps to develop plans to accommodate the change in schedule. Trying to push through a year-round calendar amid pandemic without a clear reopening plan appears rushed and careless. If there's, if fails to address the bigger issues which face RPS in reopening in-person. School, both for an actual reopening plan. And changes that will be necessary to address the mental and educational ramifications. Virtual schools and the pandemic generally have had on our children. The Esser or CARES money allocated for implementing a year-round calendar would be better spent on a rage arranging. For mental or behavioral health support services for our students when they return to the schools in person. Moreover, our teachers should receive additional support in the classroom. With aides and other support staff to help address the behavioral issues that are likely to arise. As students have to adjust to the new normal of the pan- of post-pandemic schooling. To reopen the schools without meaningful investment in providing mental health support ignores the full scope of the pandemic's effect on our communities. Please focus on developing a concrete and implement implementable plan for reopening. That action alone seems like a near, seems like a near miraculous feat at this point. Thank you. Kelly Cannon, I'm a first-grade parent at Westover Hills and a resident of the fourth district. I strongly support using Esser funds for the proposed calendar change. This is a great way to leverage these funds in a creative and necessary way. For it, the immediate COVID recovery period and presents a unique opportunity for a possible long-term change. That will have a positive impact on students' academic success. Keith Brown, I am not for the vote for the year for year-round school. As a teacher and a father, I feel that keeping things just as they are. But giving students the opportunity to get ahead or to earn lost credits in a summer program would work better than year-round. I really don't have a lot of input to support my statement, but I do not want to teach or have my children in school year-round. We like to take time in the summer to do things we can't do in the school year. It's something we look forward to each year. I also have for the past twelve years taught in an enrichment program for six weeks of the summer. I will have to give up my tenure there to work year-round. This would be disappointing to me and I know it's only a personal reason. But I enjoy it as a shift from the school year and even though I am still teaching, it's something I look forward to. And the program counts on me as a teacher they know will be there each year. I hope the vote is not to have year-round school a or a modified version of the plan of the proposed plan. Kim Gomez, my family and I can definitely get behind this adjusted calendar. I think the adjusted calendar option is strategic and thoughtful. And is backed by research to show that collective implementation of this has the potential to provide. Trans- a transformative education for kids. I didn't love it at first, probably because it's human nature not to like change. But then I looked at the proposal and and I looked at the proposal. Saw the thought and intentionality behind it and now am one hundred percent for the adjusted calendar. If we are staying virtual from now until June, I would ask the administration, consider how to put some more flexibility and fun into the days. So teachers, staff, and parents can make it work in the best way possible. Also, the administration is working around the clock and listening to all sorts of feedback. This pandemic has impacted every family in so many different ways. And some much harder than others because of systemic racism, which makes the decision-making process for our district all the more challenging. Let's just, let's extend some grace to one another. Nicole Thompson, I am undecided about the year-round calendar, but at least I have heard about it. Because I'm on Facebook. Most families, most RPS families are not on Facebook. We need to have an inclusive community discussion around a new calendar before jumping into it. Please table all discussions of the new calendar tonight and focus the Esser funding on a safe reopening for the fall. Right now, we do not have a reopening plan. There is no timeline, no action items, no status updates, no budget. There is no plan. This makes me think, this makes many of us think that we will not be ready for fall opening. Please prove us wrong. The Esser funding recommendations you are voting on tonight, thirty-seven point five million. What's the plan for the remaining sixteen point five million? Teacher vaccinations must be prioritized. I've seen more communications trying to sell me on a calendar change. Than on a teacher vaccination plan. The VDOE website is filled with directions and recommendations on how to reopen safely. We aren't fou- following their advice. Why are we ignoring them? Please stop all, please stop talking about the counter until you get inclusive community feedback on it. Focus on this fall. Sarah Milston, I write today in full support of the proposed year-round calendar for RPS. As we have taken the path of safety for our students and faculty and staff this year. I am elated at the opportunity to have a new schedule next year that will build capacity for our students in creative, creative ways. As a PHSSA parent for the last eight years, I can attest to the flexibility of the year-round schedule. And the breaks and supported offers for children. The shock of a new schedule is outweighed by the benefits for learning. For emotional and family breaks and for its flexibility to provide catch-up moments for students in most need. I wholeheartedly support this equity-focused plan to help our kids get back to learning next year. The biggest challenge in the PHSSA schedule is the lack of childcare on our different breaks. With the whole school system on the same schedule, nonprofits and community organizations. Will be able to meet the needs of our students and families. I urge you to support this calendar that is based in research and facts. Ben Makita. As an RPS parent of a student in first grade. My wife and I implore you to set aside any and all initiatives not aimed at reopening schools. We are fully appreciative of the logistical difficulties surrounding that request. As well as the heartfelt heartfelt concerns about the well-being of students, staffs. Excuse me, of students, teachers, and staff. And yet, the board has received testimony from the leading medical epidemiological professionals who have stated. That A, school environments are not super-spreader locations. B, elementary school-age students pose little risk of transmission of COVID-19. And C, if mitigation techniques are deployed properly, all RPS teachers, students, and staff can return safely to the classroom. People are losing faith in RPS's ability to do the minimum, let alone adapt to the ever-shifting needs, priorities, concerns, and challenges. The governor posed a March fifteenth date to provide an in-person plan. And the Virginia legislative legislature is rapidly moving towards the enactment of a law requiring in-person learning. And yet, what we've learned from the past past few board meetings is that there is no plan. What we heard was, this isn't possible. Perhaps the board should take the inspiration from the RPS student body. A collection of striving and hopeful kids whom we tell every day. To not accept you cannot do it as a reality. The community is yearning for your leadership. Ma- Maggie Bradshaw, please do not vote to use any of the stimulus funding budget, recurring or non-recurring. To move RPS to year-round school. The board and administration's unwillingness to execute or even consider a safe in-person option this spring. Gives parents little confidence that they have the ability to undertake planning a new schedule. Please focus on getting students and teachers back in the classroom safely. And not allocating funds to plan a new schedule that is surely bound to fail. Get teachers vaccinated, improve the buildings. Thank you for your consideration. Betty Milburn, I am sending public comment again to ask that that foundational needs be addressed as fully as possible. Before significant challenger calendar, excuse me, changes are attempted. Studies show that when foundational issues are corrected, positive change happens. Again, I believe that foundational needs should be brought up to par now versus perpetuating a system that is non-functional. But yet with the just with a different schedule. The significant calendar change needs to be shelved for this year and the foundational issue fixed now, not in two, three, or whatever years now. In order of the foundational needs, one, a holistic and healthy plan to reopen schools. Two, a ventilation audit audit of all buildings and using this information. Quickly to, and using this information quickly implement the use of ionization, UV or HEPA filters for each room in RPS. And budget for that now versus just ionization. We do not have central air and heat in all of the RPS spaces. Three, bring middle school and high schools foundational needs up to standard. This has been ignored and placed off for for too long. Resource more teachers for the upper grades in the classrooms with the needed with needed equipment. Fun after-school activities for high school students in a very robust, robust manner. Make this a concrete line item so that everyone is held accountable. We ignore the high school kids enough in an overall manner that needs to stop. Four, resource the full custodian staffing needs, not just ten positions this year, but the full twenty-seven positions. Five, complete the bathroom lunch list. And add sanitary napkin box. Check to the female gender, excuse me, female gender-neutral bathrooms and a ventilation column to the spreadsheet. These seem to be missing from the list. Six, to engage the parents in any curriculum or calendar change robustly and loudly, follow the board policy. Is very capable when they attempt this. Thank you. Laurie Kreckman. The time has come for the board to finally stop entertaining Band-Aids and drastic changes. In favor of putting more resources to one of the biggest issues in RPS, our facilities. From the outset, Mr. Cameras. From the outset of Mr. Cameras's administration, our district has been thrown into one polarizing choice after another. While our, while our crumbling infrastructure continues to take the biggest hit of them all. Do we need to be bold? Of course. But how can we be bold? How can we make bold ideas successful when we can't meet the need? Meet the basic needs of equitable education. It is mystifying how we continue to have to ask this of our leadership. The year-round school discussion is only serving as a distraction to these issues. And I implore the board to please stop this in its tracks now. And pick the discussion back up after it's been proven we can get back to in-person learning. Hopefully, that will give the administration time to meaningfully conduct widespread community outreach in other ways. Like a passing, like passing a flyer through our meal distribution with details. That then the incredibly ambiguous survey that is circulating now. Please remove it from the current Esser funds discussion and refocus that money into deferred maintenance issues. If not now, when? Gregory Bauer. We would like the focus to be on a safe reopening of schools for in-person learning this spring. This will build momentum and confidence that it can be safely done in the fall. Of all. Virginia's other one hundred thirty-plus school districts, excuse me, all of Virginia's other one hundred thirty-plus school districts are phasing. In returning to coincide with the governor's three fifteen maintenance mandate, excuse me. I'm not sure why vaccinations are so slow at RPS. Most are, most Enrico teachers are getting their second shots at this point. Perhaps because the administration is providing no push to return to in-person learning, thus no urgency. The virtual learning loss is real, delaying in-person reopening and focusing on calendar adjustments. For a small subset of kids will not make any difference. It will just cause confusion and additional anxiety. Please reopen the schools. Do not wait until the governor mandates it. James Pickren. RPS is one of the only two schools in the states, in the state that have not filed a reopening plan. Please use your voting power to insist that the administration stay focused on safely reopening. And not allow a distraction of implementing a calendar change in FY twenty-two to jeopardize a safe reopening. The discussion of a challenger, a calendar change. A discussion of the merits of year-round school or any other large-scale change is simply a distraction from the imperative of safely. Reopening the schools. There are many ways to address academic learning loss this coming year other than a calendar change. And if it is determined after significantly more community engagement, that the best thing for RPS is year-round school implemented in FY twenty-three. I am respectfully requesting that you do not approve the eight million for a calendar change in FY twenty-two. Latonya Mackey. Uh, to the students of Ms. Mackey's sixth-period humanity, that, excuse me, the students of Ms. Mackey's sixth-period humanities class. Would like to share their opinion on the proposed year-round calendar. would like to share their opinion on the proposed year-round calendar. I do not like the year-round calendar because of various reasons. The first being that this, that this summer, I would like to be able to have fun with my friends and family. Secondly, I think that year-round schools will not have much effect on education. Students would just become more unfocused and more un-behaved. This would be detrimental for education and for teachers and students. Overall, year-round schooling is a very bad idea, and no one should support it. This is why I do not like the idea of year-round school. That's Carson H. I do not like it, and I do not want to do it. I have summer plans, and now I feel like they are just taking it away from me. Summer is like one of the only times I get to see my best friends and have beach trips smack dab in the middle of August. In my opinion, I don't think we've missed that much time. The end. Brighton C. I don't like this schedule because this whole virtual, this whole virtual schooling was horrible. My mother is a teacher, and she's always in meetings, so she's spending most of her days in her office. This summer, we were supposed to go, be going to Costa Rica to see my grandfather, and I'm supposed to be going to Jamaica for my thirteenth birthday. You only turn thirteen once. It would be confusing if they turn our school sis, our school schedule all year long. Like, that's just torture. It's not our fault COVID broke out and we missed eight months of school. I think they should keep our schedule the same and put our eight-month break in, in the past. In the past. Charlie S. The year-round schedule won't work for me because my brother and I are traveling to Idaho this summer. And with all the breaks, it would really mess up, mess me up. And I have ADHD, and with the two-week break, it would be extremely hard for me to focus. I depended on hyper-focusing to get through my classes, and it helps me get my work done. But with really long breaks, I would have an extremely hard time hyper-focusing. I don't like the year-round, that, that was from Phoenix D. I'm sorry. I don't like the year-round school idea because it's going to be hard to do my sports and to play and to go to school. I play AAU basketball and football in the summer, so I travel to different states to play games. Thank you. I'll continue because they're separate comments. Um, I will probably have to miss the first week of school because I'm going to be in different states playing the games and in turn, in tournaments. Lee Roy C. Um, Ms. Mackey's sixth-period humanity classes opinions or their comments, um, continue.
Yes, they are a different set of.
Yes. I do not have a problem with the schedule. I do not think, I don't think it would benefit. I do not have a problem with the schedule. I don't think I would benefit from a new schedule, but it would not cause any problems for me. While it might give students who are struggling some opportunities to get help, I might be able to remember topics better because it, better, it might cause problems with summer camps and jobs, summer jobs. To address the amount of days students have missed, I think RPS could start by reducing the amount of snow days given out in a virtual, in virtual school for no reason. Anthony B. I personally don't feel strongly about the year-round calendar. As long as we have similar amount of break days, I'm fine. I see the arguments for and against both sides, and I agree with most of them. I'm happy no matter what. Jillian R. I'd rather not have the all-year-round calendar, but I really wouldn't mind. Some pros are more breaks, and we wouldn't have time to forget what we learned over the summer break. But some cons are we wouldn't have a regular summer. But I think the board, that the board should vote not to have all-year-round school. Kalia Yum. I feel like the year-round school would need, would not be that much of a problem because it's school. I know I need to be, I know I need to go to be successful in whatever I do. Keonte B. Dennis Parker. Hello, Ms. Gibson. I appreciate you being an ear and your active responses in the past when I have laid concerns at your doorstep regarding Northside. Um, I, again, I thank you, again, thank you for your servant leadership examples. I am writing to you, I'm writing you today to communicate my immense displeasure and dissatisfaction with the approach or lack thereof to winter sports that was taken by the current administration. This weekend, our winter sports region's superior athletes were named by members of the press and local coaches. No Richmond Public Schools child was on the list, not because they weren't, they were not talented, but because they did not work hard enough for three years prior, not even because of lack of personal resources. No, our children were denied by our leadership. COVID nineteen, while a major impediment, did not stop over eighty percent of the high schools in the Commonwealth of Virginia from participating in winter, winter sports. Below you will see the last communication I've had with the superintendent of Richmond Public Schools. It was my response. He nor his team did not think enough of us to dignify us with a response. Very sad, as I am told, there was pride in understanding, respecting, and communicating with Richmond's parental community. Maybe that applies to a certain subset that I'm not a member of. Further, the superintendent and his team were even so disrespectful that they chose not even, they chose not to even speak to the sixty-plus parents of children whose lives they have permanent, permanently negatively impacted via our Zoom or any other Zoom. COVID has allowed people to shy away from open and upfront, upfront dialogue many times required of sound and effective and all-inclusive public policy. What is utterly sickening is this eerie familiar tone, eerily familiar tone of passive-aggressively, aggressively ignoring, excuse me, the will or the voice of people within the city. Rupa Murthy. Thank you for voting to give teachers in RPS a must, much-deserved raise and fund their step increases in salary. Please work harder to engage families in RPS about reopening, about a reopening schedule that includes year-round schools. They benefit, the benefits, excuse me, to working families and for students who have fallen behind during this pandemic are worth the time and effort to engage families across the districts, specifically Black and Spanish-speaking families in RPS. Please also consider increasing the April enrollment to five thousand students for in-person learning across the district. Putting students with IEPs and/or English language learners at the center of your efforts and offering families in K-five at the twenty-five elementary schools an option to return in a hybrid model, once our teachers and staff have had ample opportunity to be vaccinated. Also, consider a reopening plan for small high schools like opening a community. Nothing about COVID is fair, and this work is hard. I appreciate all of the, all of your efforts to bring students back during this pandemic. Pat Levy Lavelle. I write for three reasons. First, for whatever HVAC upgrades you want now, please use the standard cooperative agreement process. The RFP, the RFP process will be too slow and make it much less likely that those upgrades are in place for fall twenty twenty-one. Second, please create a clear debt, clear and detailed dashboard about progress, progress towards fall twenty twenty-one reopening. The DC public schools and other district have done, other districts have done this, and it is an important step for trust and transparency. Third, I am open to year-round school, but the priority now should be on gearing up for a timely in-person reopening for fall twenty twenty-one. And year-round school is a significant change. It may be the right thing for RPS ultimately, but we need deep and deliberative, excuse me, deliberate engagement across RPS with teachers and families to figure this out. Although well-intentioned, a web-based survey does not begin to scratch the surface of engage, of the engagement needed. And that survey was just released one week ago on February sixteen. RPS communities need to learn more about the year-round school, think through pros and cons, and have time to decide what direction we want to go together. For now, given the urgency of the situation, please use the CARES Act ESSER money on detail, on dealing with the backlog of building maintenance on additional student supports and on adequate custodial staffing, including seventeen additional custodians beyond those currently proposed to meet basic standards. Matthew Nielsen. I write regarding the proposed, the proposal about year-round school beginning this summer. I am an RPS parent of a rising second grader and kindergartner. Please table this exploration or discuss, in discussion until kids are back in the buildings. The large majority of teachers and parents do not want this change and distraction in the middle of an already very challenging year. That eight million dollars can be used to focus on what I think must be the top priority for RPS, a safe return to in-person school. The lack of a concrete reopening plan is eroding confidence in our community schools. This is a time when RPS needs a community, needs community support more than ever. You have had, you have a massive and critical challenge ahead in safely reopening these schools. Why is the administration using every communication platform to promote the year-round versus, year-round calendar versus safely reopening? If they were interested in having a meaningful discussion about year-round school, they could have been using the meal distribution pickups to discuss this with families. A simple invalid web survey that requires no email address and can be taken unlimited times doesn't cut it. I've heard, I've heard a few folks say, we can do it. This administration can walk and chew gum at the same time. I wholeheartedly don't believe we can. We are not even walking right now. There are so many questions and protocols that RPS must address for a safe return to in-person school. You can choose to end this distraction by making a motion tonight and having the majority vote to cease discussions about the calendar until kids are back in the building. Build a robust summer school option this summer to address pandemic learning loss, similar to what DC Public Schools is doing. Unfortunately, many players, many parents are planning their contingencies for the fall, whether that includes homeschooling, large pods with teach, with a teacher. Gina Conway. As you make your bud, as you make budget decisions, I strongly encourage this board to prioritize young learner, prioritize young learners for a summer session this year, regardless of academic test scores. RPS is currently missing at least forty percent of its preschoolers. RPS enrolls six hundred and fifty-five fewer preschoolers this year compared to the prior year. RPS preschool typically serves ninety-six percent children of color. Nearly all of the missing preschoolers are Black and Hispanic and live in lower-income households. Yet, there are no plans for a summer session for these students. Similarly, there are no summer school plans for the one thousand children currently enrolled in virtual RPS preschool, nearly all of whom may be considered at risk. Yet, these are the very children who would benefit most from a summer session where they could play with peers, build relationships with trusting adults, practice their social skills, and be supported to recover from last year's trauma, while also building their foundation for literacy and math learning. Finally, RPS should offer summer programming to all current kindergarteners because they have not had any in-person school experience. Many of these children would otherwise enter first grade without having had the opportunity to build critical social, emotional skills which are not captured on piles or any other tests. In fact, offering a summer session when which preschoolers and kindergartners can engage in safe, adult facilitated play can actually help promote learning next year. For young learners, reopening with love is reopening with play. In a recent meeting, I heard a RPS parent who is also an RPS preschool teacher ask, was that time, Ms. Collins?
No, ma'am. Go ahead.
Okay, when is RPS going to make preschool a priority? Now is the time to make young learners a priority and to offer age and developmentally appropriate summer's programming that gives these children a chance to recover and thrive. Madam Chair, I believe that is, uh, those are all the comments that were posted tonight.
Thank you very much, Attorney Lilly and Madam Clerk. Thank you so very much, Ms. Collins. And thank you to each of the persons and our students and parents and supporters of RPS and our children to remind us to keep the main thing, the main thing, and that is meeting the needs of our children. Madam Clerk, please let the record show that Ms. Nicole Jones is here. Welcome, Ms. Jones. We'll now move on to the next item, item three, budgetary items. Discussion of new funding from the elementary and secondary school emergency relief ESSER fund. Mr. Cameras.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Um, I wanted to try to, um, provide some framework for the discussion. Hopefully, leading to action on our next budget item for the ESSER funding. That's the fifty-four point six million from the federal government. I do want to just, uh, clarify a few notes. The action we would take tonight would enable us to put forth a plan to the Virginia Department of Education. They would then review that plan and assuming they approve it, would then be able to release the funds to us. And so, that is why taking action, um, as soon as possible and ideally tonight is so critical because many of the, uh, items that we heard from public comment tonight, specifically facilities, are tied to our ability to get those funds. Uh, without them, we are just significantly hampered in our, uh, ability to, to accomplish many of those things. Um, I do want to note that given the, uh, ongoing discussion around year-round calendar, and we are of course not prepared to make that decision tonight, nor did we intend to. I would like to propose that we, uh, some slightly modify our spend plan to, uh, convert the eight million for this coming fiscal year, and then we have six million for the following year. Uh, we convert that from explicitly for year-round, uh, to, um, additional instructional support. Uh, knowing that we can determine at a later date, perhaps, uh, March first, March fifteenth, um, how exactly, uh, we want to use those funds, whether it's for the year-round or for some other purpose. But if we were able to just designate those funds tonight as additional learning support, that would enable us to get the, um, the spend plan over to the state and let them review it and then, uh, sign off and get the funds flowing. Um, and then that would give us a couple more weeks to make the determination, the calendar for next year. I don't want that to be the thing that holds us up. Secondarily, uh, we received some updated estimates from the city about the childcare support that we had included in the ESSER proposal. Uh, uh, instead of two point five million, it's looking like it will be a little bit closer to two point one million. And so, given the board's, uh, interest in additional custodial support, I would recommend that we use that balance, the four hundred thousand for an additional seven custodians, bringing our total to seventeen new custodians and one, uh, assistant for the custodial team, which, uh, a number of you, uh, including, I believe Dr. Harris Mohammed had mentioned as, as a key need, and we would, uh, certainly agree with that. Uh, and so, uh, in short, what I am asking the board to do tonight is to approve the ESSER as we provided it, again, with those two adjustments. Um, taking the, uh, money that we had allocated for year-round and just calling it additional learning support, and we will decide what that means at a later meeting. Uh, we can decide, yes, we want to move forward with the year-round, or no, we want to use it in a different way. Um, I still maintain, uh, uh, that year-round would be a, a good path to go, but I don't want to go down that, that rabbit hole tonight, and, um, we don't have to. We can just, um, uh, just identify those funds for additional learning support. And then, again, second change, using four hundred thousand from the, um, the childcare line and putting that towards seven additional custodians, bringing our total to seventeen, and one assistant for the custodial staff. So that is, uh, my recommendation, uh, to the board this evening. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Cameras. Uh, Mr. Young, do we have any questions or comments?
Yes, ma'am. Dr. Harris Mohammed.
Dr. Harris Mohammed, the floor is yours.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you, Madam Chair. I also would like to thank our, um, our community for the public comments. Thank you so very much. I, I really appreciate your comments. Mr. Cameras, I want to repeat, because I want to make sure that I understand what you just shared. So at any time, please, you have, um, the professional courtesy to stop me and correct me because I'm repeating what I think you said, okay? What, how I interpret it. And speaking with the city, it has been determined that the child support from the city, which originally thought was at two point five million, is now two point one million. So those additional funds, you would, you are recommending that those additional funds of four hundred thousand dollars be moved to add seven custodians. Am I correct?
Seven custodians and an assistant.
Seven custodians and an assistant for the custodial staff. That assistant, is it a secretary or it's just, it's still certain, I'm still considered classified, am I correct?
Correct.
Classified position.
Yes.
Okay. Did I repeat that? Did I repeat that the way that I heard you say?
If I may clarify just one thing.
Yeah.
Um, the two point five million we had put in the Esser proposal. As that was the estimate that the city had given us. Uh, we asked a number of questions and asked the city to uh dig a little bit deeper about. Um, those expenses and based on that inquiry. They came back with a refined number which fortunately was a lower number at two point one million. So yes, that is why we have. A little bit extra there.
Okay, thank you. Follow-up question, Madam Chair?
Yes.
Thank you. And what I think I also heard you say is that you have made a recommendation. And of course, thank you so much for sharing with the public that. You were not asking us to vote on your proposal because there were some mis- some miscommunication, I'm sure you're aware. So thank you for doing that. Um, but the fifty-four point six million from the federal government. For the spin-down plan. The eight million that you were proposing in your budget plan for the year-round calendar. This is where I think you're gonna have to help me. Um, you want to take six million. No, excuse me, you want to take two million out of that eight million to provide additional instructional support as your team see fit. Did I hear that correctly?
Uh, no, Dr. Harris Mohammed.
Okay, then help me because that's what I thought I heard.
Um, so in the upcoming fiscal year FY twenty-two. We have eight million allocated for a year-round schedule. And then in FY twenty-three, we have six million allocated for year-round to maintain it. So actually, it's a total of fourteen million. What I am recommending is we take all fourteen million of that. And um rather than say it's for year round, we just say it is for additional learning support. The board uh understandably can take additional time to determine what exactly that additional support will be. It could be a year-round calendar, uh, which we'll discuss at our next meeting. But the board could also decide to use those funds for other supports. I'm uh proposing this so as to um ensure that the board does not feel compelled. Tonight to make a decision on year round. So that you can approve the spending plan so that we can take it to the VDOE. And then begin to get the money flowing so we can do the facilities work and other things that we want. So. Um, this was an effort to try to make this vote tonight less complicated, just make it about. We know we need the money, we gotta get the plan in, let's go with this and then we can always, in fact. Throughout the life of the grant, which covers two fiscal years, we can always submit amendments if we find out, you know. We said we were gonna spend a million dollars on A, but we've decided. What we really need is a million dollars on B. We we can amend it throughout that period. Um, so by designating that fourteen million, eight million in FY twenty-two. And six million in FY twenty-three, by designating that as additional learning support. And that is obviously a very broad term which we could decide um to use in any number of different ways. Um, including year round if that is ultimately a decision, but that is something we don't have to decide tonight. We could decide on. March first, March fifteenth, um, whenever uh we feel it is necessary to do so.
Thank you. Madam Clerk, final follow-up if I may.
All right, and then we're gonna go ahead and move to Ms. White. Thank you. Go right ahead.
Yes ma'am, thank you. I I really appreciate you sharing that, Mr. Cameras, because as you you know, there were so. So many different scenarios and um the community not having. I mean, by no fault of their own, please let me be clear, but I think just. Pieces of information, just going out there about what you were proposing and the variety of calendars and. All of these different things. So I really appreciate you breaking down that FY twenty-three and FY twenty-two because. Bullets like that can oftentimes be missed and and what you're trying to propose or what you're trying to present. Um, I I want to publicly state now, take this opportunity to say that I I sincerely appreciate you. Diving in to find out where we can have additional custodians. But I am still standing on that in order to support the reopening of schools according to what the new regulations are based on our. Numbers of schools and the square footage of many of our schools, I I still stand on having twenty-seven positions. Um, letting the public know though that um would twenty, all twenty-seven positions be um fielded by. Au- August or September, probably not, but if there was a recommendation on the table for us to discuss. How we could um possibly look at our budget to. Um, make sure that we are fully staffed at that twenty-seven number. I'm open to that because I believe in compromise. And meeting each other at the at the medium, but as the the way that you proposed it right now, I professionally could not support. Just seventeen custodians when when the the presentation clearly stated we needed twenty-seven. But I want to say thank you for going a little deeper. Based on the questions that we had over the past couple of weeks. So I sincerely thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Harris Mohammed. Ms. White, the floor is yours.
Thank you, Madam President. Um, Mr. Cameras, um, I don't want to echo my um colleague. But um she kind of summed it up. Um, it did said twenty-seven. And I'm gonna repeat it again, that's what I want for the children. I will not shortchange our children's health and safety. And I will not shortchange my own children who goes to RPS. And I would like to, if we're gonna take money and borrow money and switch money fourteen million additional for learning support. Then we should be able to give our children twenty-seven. We're not asking for much, twenty-seven and you're gonna give. Uh, them seven more, eight more. So I'm I'm looking for twenty-seven. And also I would like to know, can we see an update of that spending plan with the adjustments that you're going to send to the state?
Madam Chair, may I?
Yes, please.
Um, I I do want to clarify, Ms. White, uh, we already had ten custodians in the proposal, so this would bring it to seventeen.
Yes, understood.
Okay, um, and I'm glad to uh show the document again. Um, and identify where those changes would occur. Um, but it boils down to to those two items that I that I referenced, changing the then the. The label, as it were, on that fourteen million, what we're calling its purpose from year round to. Additional instructional support. And then reducing the childcare line from two point five million to two point one million. And then increasing the custodians from ten to seventeen.
So uh, again, why can it not be what is it, what is required, required is twenty-seven?
Well, that is certainly uh something the board could do. I would appreciate guidance from the board as to where you would want to cut. From another part of the proposal. Um, and um, I do want to note while. That is uh considered the industry standard. I know there was also concern from the board. About putting all of these new positions on one-time funding. Um, we could uh, for example, cut. Out of the additional learning support and put the full twenty-seven custodians on that, but. You're also then putting all of those positions potentially in peril over the long term because. There isn't the recurring funding for that. So I I, that's why we tried to strike the balance between. Um, trying to put more uh positions out there while not going so far. That we would be in a tough spot and not be able to pay for those positions in a couple of years and then have to lay off all those custodians. So that's why we were trying to balance and find a middle ground. Um, I would of course be thrilled to have uh the additional custodians. Um, but I also feel very strongly and very passionately about the additional learning support. I think. Um, now I think I know. We're going to need as much um as we possibly can to support our our young people with catching up and accelerating forward. We know. Many of our young people were behind pre-COVID, and so I I do feel we have an obligation to invest heavily in. Um, the instructional piece as well. So again, we tried to provide a a balance uh for the board to consider. Um, but of course, ultimately, uh, this is this is the board's decision.
Thank you, Mr. Cameras. Thank you, Ms. White. Ms. Gibson, followed by Ms. Page.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Um, so I have been uh. Thinking uh, you know, a lot about how we can best support our students next year. And uh. You know, there um, there's been a lot of talk about year-round school and um, you know, to be fully transparent as a. Transparent as a parent myself, it it gives me some stress to not know. At this stage, you know, what the calendar is going to look like next year. Um, and I and I do have a lot of concerns related to the calendar. Um, in terms of, you know, retaining staff and um, and the variance between our calendar and our regional calendars and and. And many other things. Um, although I don't think it's a bad idea, I do think that it needs more time. Um, but as I think about, you know, what we need the most. Especially after this year and sitting next to my son every day and 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 kind of being with him as he goes from class to class. And then there's all this talk about the importance of social emotional learning, you know? And you know, we talk about needing additional support, but from my perspective. You know, even with that additional support with, we had additional staff, we don't, there's no time in the day. To provide that resource, you know? I mean, at the, at the end of the day, our kids are, um, you know, going from class to class. Teachers have a very rigorous schedule that they're trying to maintain in order to ensure that they're meeting all of those SOL benchmarks. And to be frank, there's just no wiggle room to be able to um, to give teachers and students. The chance to breathe, you know, and and that's, that's, that's kind of the mental health support, you know, like can we just? Give us some space. Um, and so I would like for the administration to consider, you know, that what if we were to use those funds and we were to add. As many days as we could afford, you know, and and I, you know, so if we were to add. You know, even just an additional week to this calendar and have additional days there to give us a little bit more room. To allow teachers to um, you know, to be able to take time and and get to know the students and to be able to do those. Those other types of activities um, so that we aren't um, you know, that every minute of the day is not. Um, is not scheduled to having to meet um, a very specific benchmark. Um, so I would like the district to to consider that. Um, I think that I would also support considering um, what summer school looks like and so. Um, you know, I'm not sure that this summer is right time, but I I think that there would be great support. If we were to keep the schedule or the calendar as is and then um, in the summer of uh twenty-two. That we really um expand summer schools to allow many, many more families the ability to participate. Um, and uh, and I think at that point too, after another, you know, having a normal year. That we'd be able to assess which students really could use the additional support and 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 take the year to build a summer school program. Um, that could really um, meet the needs of of many of our students. Um, and so I think that that's worth considering. I also think in this budget, um, you know, we uh. Just thinking from a, you know, facility standpoint, furniture is really important, you know, and we've and we've been working on prior budgets. Um, and it, you know, we became clear, we don't even have a furniture line item in our budget. You know, and so um, now is a perfect time, I think, to look at how um, you know, to ensure that the classrooms are are. Um, you know, are set up for success in the the new uh landscape, which we unfortunately are now in. It's a perfect time to be able to um, to use some of that funding to um, to to replace some. Furniture that has frankly just been falling apart. Um, I also think it's really important that we consider what uh our substitutes. So if a teacher is sick or um, you know, we have always had a shortage of substitutes. And so um, you know, next year, what we've been doing in the past is having, you know, teachers fill in. Um, and and given, you know, the 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 reality, um, we we need to have more substitutes in place. And I think that that would be um, a really critical place to to put some of those dollars. Um, and so, and so I I just think that there are a lot of opportunities now. Um, in terms of the recurring expenditures, you know, I want to make it very clear. Um, you know, I do support the addition of all of those staff positions. Um, you know, for the most part, the, there's no question. That we need those additional um supports, that we need the adults in the building. I however, um. You know, ha- it gives me great pause to think that we'd be putting the district in um, a bit of a gamble, not knowing where those funds are coming from. I remember uh, it was about a year or so ago, we had a meeting with a VDOE and I had a uh. I was in a small group with uh with Dr. Lane and and he talked about the decision to do hybrid. Of um, some outsourced custodial services along with um, with having an internal team and I believe the way he had structured it. Was that the uh outsourced services um, did some of the the custodial work after school hours and through that arrangement, they were able to. Um, you know, have a a a model that worked, although I think eventually, you know, he replaced that with internal folks. And and you know, and I'm not one to want to outsource, right? But um, but in this instance, I really do think that that scenario could make sense where. Um, you know, we can put in the the supports that we need without putting people in a position of of accepting positions that we may not be able to fund. Long-term. Um, and so I I would request that the district consider um, consider that uh as a solution. Um, and uh, the last point I want to make is there is also a a line item regarding the curriculum for science. And again, as we're talking about change after change after change, um, you know, I I do have concern on. Implementing another new curriculum at a time when we're talking about so many other changes. Um, I would really love to hear from staff in in terms of how the curriculum is working this year before we look at executing another new curriculum. Um, in the fall. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Gibson. Um, I know my name is above there and someplace along the list, so Mr. Young, I'm not next, I'm going next. I think I'm above Ms. Uh, right over Ms. Page, then Ms. Doom, then um, someone else will have after that. Um, first of all, thank you so much, Mr. Cameras. As I know, tonight our major focus is to. Spend time on making sure that we have the opportunity to get this funding. Because if we don't get it in on time, it's going, you know, if you don't submit, I'm never gonna let fifty-four million dollars go. And I know not anyone else on this board as well. So I I do want us to keep it for us at night that um. Our vote tonight will be whether to or not to submit the application. Of the FY twenty-two Special Revenue Fund to include Essa. So far as the um, other items, I know we will discuss the calendar on March first, that's on our March first agenda. But um, what you stated along the lines of um, the childcare piece, which I'm glad that we will continue that in the. Schools and facilities of which our children are currently receiving that virtual learning. And also the master facilities evaluation at which we continue to care at length. It's time not to keep putting the Band-Aid on it on situations, but to fix it and make it right. And I look forward to the opportunity in rich and public schools that our buildings are up to par and beyond. We we deserve that, our children deserve that. The main thing, the main thing and which is a comprehensive evaluation regarding this um, additional custodians. I'm I'm along the line with that as well, as I talked to some principals this past week. Some said, Ms. Berg, we're good with the principals, but we need more behavior specialists. So I know that we we can, once this. Budget is approved, we can go back and amend. We can go back and change this. The main thing right now is to um, come together collectively. To vote that the administration does put in an application. We want to change it from seventeen custodians to twenty-seven custodians, behavior specialists. Or take away from the master's facility plan. Right now, the main thing is to. Right now, the main thing is to not miss that deadline date. So I hope that we can move forward expediently and know also that we will address the, I have a lot of questions also, the year-round calendar. Have a lot of questions regarding the dashboard. Have a lot of questions regarding community input. Because we do want to make sure that everybody has a chance, all our stakeholders, our students, our teachers, our crew chiefs across the board. Most important, our teachers and support teams as well. But right now for tonight, please colleagues, know that tonight our charge is to move forward. Whether we do or we don't want the $54 million. And once we get the $54 million and the application has been made, we can amend that. It is, it's not etched in stone. The main thing is to submit that we do need the money. And right now, what we're asking for, correct me if I'm wrong, Superintendent, the childcare piece with the additional money left for the master facilities evaluation and the additional custodians. And then once we get the funding, then we can come back. You know, it's always great to make plans when you have it in your hands. When you make plans and it's just out there in the universe, I don't want anybody else to take our money. And that has happened to Richmond many years ago. And the people say, don't talk about the past, but we don't want to give any money back. We want to receive it and catch up and move beyond that. So I just want to remind you all tonight, please, that tonight our charge is to visit, study the FY22 Special Revenue Fund, including the ESSER. And that, then once we get the money, we can, we can, we should have more data. We should have the dashboard, we should have more community input, and we can move forward collectively in a better manner. So I just wanted to be clear on that. Ms. Page, your next, followed by Ms. Doer.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I appreciate this information, this breakdown. I too have, still have a lot of questions. But I'm glad to hear that we have additional opportunities. But the main thing is, is putting in our application. Because we recognize in this district, pre-COVID, post-COVID, has really revealed then equities. Not only in RPS, but in the state, country. So COVID has really revealed a lot. So my point is, I want to make sure that our children receive everything that they need, but also want to make sure that it's equity across the board. Because, and we know equity means resources. Not just saying the word equity. It means providing the resources for our students with the most needs. So at this time, I would like to motion to approve the FY22 Special Revenue Fund, including the ESSER.
Thank you, Ms. Page. Is there a second? Is there a second to the motion made by Ms. Page to approve the FY22 Special Revenue Fund, including ESSER, $54 million?
Second.
Madam Chair, Ms. Doer, motion to second.
Thank you, Mr. Young and Ms. Doer for a second. Ms. Page made the motion, Ms. Doer seconded. Is there, oh my, I don't know what happened here. Are you all still there? What happened?
Mr. Vice Chair, I think we lost chair.
I don't know, I don't know what happened. Here I am. What did you all do? $54 million, right? Yes, $54 million. All right. I didn't touch anything. Thank you. It's been moved by Ms. Page, seconded by Mrs. Doer, that the motion is to approve the FY22 Special Revenue Fund, including ESSER. Are you ready for the vote? Is there, is there a question or discussion?
Madam Chair, we have
Yes, sir.
Ms. Doer and Ms. Rizzi.
All right, Ms. Doer, floor is yours.
Yes, Ms. Page, would you be willing to accept, just a clarification on the motion, that the ESSER funding is amended to specifically earmark $8 million for additional learning support? And can you give me the amount for the custodians, Mr. Cameras?
Yeah, so just to be precise, it would be $14 million, $8 million in FY22, $6 million in FY23 for additional learning support. That would replace what is currently listed as year-round, because we'll make that discussion later, that decision later. And reducing the childcare line from $2.5 million to $2.1 million. And increasing the custodians from 10 to 17 with one assistant.
I just typed that in the chat. Ms. Page, would you be willing to just clarify your motion?
Sure, because I was typing as well, but you might be a faster typer than I am, but I don't see it.
We're amending, one moment ladies, we're amending the motion because
Just a clarification of the motion specifically.
And if I may, Madam Chair, Mrs. Doer, the only addition I would make is you have $8 million in FY22. And I think you need, and, $6 million in FY23. You just missed this.
For additional learning support.
And I do have a couple of comments when we get the motion straight.
Take your time, Ms. Page. While Ms. Page is getting the motion straight, can we go on to Ms. Rizzi?
Madam Chair, can, may I also make a couple of comments as well?
Go ahead, Ms. Doer.
I can, I can go after Ms. Rizzi.
Go ahead, go ahead. We haven't gotten to the part of deliberating because we hadn't gotten to that part. Go ahead.
I didn't want my second to be my only thing for comments. Anyways, I'll let Ms. Rizzi go first and then I'll follow.
Ms. Rizzi, would you be so kind, please?
Certainly. Thank you, Madam Chair, and thank you, Mrs. Doer. Mrs. Doer, I want to express my thanks to you. That was part of what I was going to ask for, is a clarification of the motion to include those details, just so that we have it in writing and we can be sure about what we're voting on. You know, a lot of parents I've spoken to, and I also want to thank you, Mr. Cameras, for, you know, making this move. A lot of parents I've spoken to are not even aware of how this year-round calendar works. And I'm not exaggerating that, like, they literally were under the impression that their kids would be in school year-round, that there would be a significant amount of days added to the calendar for everyone. I literally, you know, people who are normally in the know weren't completely aware of how this calendar works. So we definitely need a lot more community engagement and stakeholder involvement with deciding what's going to be best for our kids in the 2022 school year. As far as custodians are concerned, I think they are really important. I like Ms. Gibson's idea of perhaps considering outsourcing so that these positions, you know, we're not hiring people who are dependent on full-time jobs to fill what may or may not be financed in the long term. Although it does raise the question, you know, if we can't do that with custodians, why could we do that with year-round school? And we weren't really sure that that could be funded beyond three years. So I mean, that's just some, a question I have. I love that comment from the public comments about how very few of our parents are on Facebook. I have found that to be true, that a lot of our parents are not connected via Facebook in ways that a lot of us assume that they are. I spent time with a custodian today, actually, really delightful man who talked so much about how much he misses our kids, how much he loves them, how much he wants to see them back in the building, and how hard he's working to make sure that the building is ready. So I just, you know, I want to reiterate very strongly that our custodians are important. They're working, they're the only ones in the building often. And, you know, I want to send much respect to them. Building level improvements, I mean, I'm getting photos of science labs with crumbling ceilings and equipment that doesn't work. I do think that we need to really think about how we go about, you know, taking on some of these really important improvements in our buildings and maybe prioritize that too as part of our plan to get ready. And we need to offer our stakeholders some kind of concrete plan very soon. A lot of them are becoming very impatient with us, where that's concerned, and I think that's understandable. So, yeah, I just wanted to express those. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Ms. Rizzi. And once we get this funding, can't do it without it. So this is a great opportunity for us. So thank you so very, very much. And as we stated earlier, it can be amended however we want to move the money about. But I'm sorry for the pandemic, but I'm glad that, as Ms. Page stated, this is an opportunity for us to finally get some funding. It's still not enough, but it's more than what we have and have had in a long time, if ever. If ever in my 40-plus years in Richmond Public Schools. So, Mrs. Doer, back to you.
Thanks, sorry for the confusion. So just two points of clarification that I'm hoping the administration can help clear up. And two requests and then a comment. So points of clarification are, the custodian is a recommendation, it's not a legal requirement. I just want to make sure that we're clear on that.
That's correct.
Yeah, so if we have less custodians than is recommended, it's not like we're breaking the law. I just think that's important to clarify. The reason why we do not, have not submitted a reopening plan to the state is because we have not approved the ESSER funding. Is that also correct?
Well, I want to make sure we don't confuse a few things here. So the ESSER funding is what we're talking about tonight. As far as the spring of this year, this body has not made a decision on that. I cannot submit a plan to the state formally until this body has made a decision about the spring, which is why we haven't done so yet. My understanding is we'll talk about that at our next board meeting.
Okay. Thank you. That's, that's helpful. I wasn't sure what we meant by reopening plan. So it's the reopening plan for the spring. My two requests are that, one, just for the public record, we upload the actual ESSER, final ESSER submission to board docs. And then, two, that I know that I've been asking a lot of questions on bipolar ionization. I'm prepared to support moving forward with these important upgrades to our buildings. But I do think that it's important for us to monitor the efficacy of this technology, especially in our older buildings. And I would request that we continue to solicit independent engineering advice as it relates to the installation here. So I would request, as we have our dashboard, that we have updates on that technology. And then, finally, my statement is just that, you know, every budget is full of trade-offs and that's the hard work that we as a board have to do. But I am really, I think there are many things that we can celebrate with this hopefully approval that enable us to get started on the HVAC upgrades that we couldn't previously afford, that we're able to ensure that there's a nurse in every school, that we're able to have a laptop refresh for our teachers, and many other necessary reopening enhancements that prepare us for a successful fall. So thank you very much. Excited and pleased to support this.
Thank you, Ms. Doer, for that recap. Thank you so very much. Mr. Young, before we move on with the motion, is anyone else listed?
Yes, ma'am. Ms. Gibson, then Ms. White, then Dr. Harris Mohammed.
All right, Ms. Gibson, the floor is yours.
Thank you. Thank you, Madam Chair. I, I am not going to vote in favor of the, the motion on the table this evening. And, you know, I recognize that, that may be an unpopular choice. And it's not one that I take lightly. I, I don't, the, the needs that our district has are immense. And, and, you know, we've now been through the process of making cuts to the budget. I've, I've been through that process. And I, and the whole reason why I ran for this office is after reading, you know, headlines about this board after the recession having to make substantial cuts to our budget. And I am simply not willing to put this district in that position again. And I, I truly, truly hope that, that the economy continues to grow and that we are able to replace this, I think it's about $5 million in recurring revenue costs two, two years down the road so that we can continue those services. That is my, that is my true hope. But I, I personally am not comfortable taking that risk and putting the district in that position where we may need to make cuts. I, I also have some unease about submitting a request that, that includes, you know, you know, somewhat vague language in terms of how we are going to be spending $8 million, which is, which is a huge amount of money. And, and I guess my, my initial estimate was undercut. So it's actually not $5 million in recurring revenue. It's, you know, the additional $8 million as well. And so, you know, this, this application is due on April 1st. And, and I, and I feel it's somewhat, somewhat disingenuine to put this onus of rush on the district that we need to make this decision now. Let's be frank, we are one of two districts in the entire state that has not already reopened. And those districts were not, you know, not contingent on, on these funds in order to make that happen. Now, you don't need to tell me that our district has unique needs, and I get that. However, however, you know, we could be further along than we are. And I, and I do not put the onus of that responsibility on the fact that we did not have that, that $54 million until now. I do think it is our responsibility to, to have a concrete plan, both for how we're going to reopen and, and a detailed understanding about how we're going to use those funds. And so that is the rationale of my vote this evening. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Gibson. Mrs. White?
Thank you, Madam President. What I wanted to say is that the ESSER is to address the impact of the COVID-19. Tonight, I will vote forth that we won't lose any money. But this is not a safe reopening plan. I'm looking for a safe reopening plan for our children. And I want to, it ought to deal with the masking, the social distancing, the hand washing, the adequate ventilations, and the contract and tracing. And I haven't seen any plan, and I know you're saying, Mr. Cameras, that is going to this state. Right now, I am not looking for year-round schooling. And whatever we have to do to ensure that our children get what is needed to safely reopen the schools, that is what I'm looking for. But to get the money, to not to lose any money, I will vote yes for it. But I can also say that, yes, when the money come in, there will be some different allocations. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. White. And Dr. Harris Mohammed, and then back to Ms. Page.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you, Madam Chair. I just wanted to be professionally clear, even though it's not breaking the law that we don't fund 27 positions, it is right. And that, and as a leader who was voted by my constituents and also as a professional educator, I always want to stand in what's right. And so even though I haven't heard any recommendations of how we can fund the other 17, and I have no and I have no doubt that we put children first, but I also put safety of everybody first. So yes, to be clear, it is not illegal. We're not breaking the law, but it's also what's right. And so we, we not only need to um, address what is requested, but we also want to do what's right within the request. And so I, I am with the um, my colleague from the second district that I have some strong reservations about what has been presented. But I also cannot um, stand against us trying to obtain the money that is presented to us for the opportunities to expand or instructional opportunities for our children. So I support it in that um, avenue, but I want the public to understand that I too will continue to fight to ensure that we have our custodians that are fully staffed. Just because it's not breaking the law doesn't mean that we don't have an obligation to operate within righteousness. So I just wanted to make sure that I was clear on that. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Dr. Harris Mohammed. Ms. Page?
Yes, Madam Chair. So I have the motion with um, clarity. So I motion to approve the FY twenty-two special revenue fund, including the ESSR grant funding to include the fourteen million dollars, eight million in FY twenty twenty-two and six million in FY twenty twenty-three to replace what is currently year-round for additional learning support and reducing the childcare line from two point five million to two point one million and increasing the custodians from ten to seventeen with one assistant.
Ms. Page, would you be so kind to read that again?
Certainly.
Thank you.
Put in the chat.
Yeah, but would you mind repeating it? I just want to make sure I have it written down correctly as well. Okay, I know I can go to the chat, but I thought I heard something that I, I shouldn't have heard. Would you go ahead, please?
Okay.
Thank you.
I motion to approve the FY twenty-two special revenue fund, including S, the ESSR grant funding to include the fourteen million dollars, eight million in FY twenty twenty-two and six million eh, in FY twenty twenty-three to replace what is currently year-round for additional learning support and reducing the childcare line from two point five million to two point one million and increasing the custodians from ten to seventeen with one assistant.
Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Ms. Dorr. It's been moved by Ms. Page and properly second that we do receive the, we put in application for the FY twenty-two special revenue funding to include ESSR to include eight million plus for twenty twenty-two, six million for twenty twenty-three for additional learning support. And the childcare two point one million with four hundred thousand going to the master facilities evaluation comprehensive um, plan and seventeen additional custodians plus one office associate. Are we ready for the? Uh, is there any, is there a question, any discussion? Then we'll vote.
Madam Chair.
Do we have anybody?
I believe the superintendent requested opportunity to.
I'm good.
All right. Please, yes, Mr. Cameras.
No, I'm good.
Okay. Is that it, Mr. Young?
Uh, Madam Chair, I will uh, uh, if I may, um, I will inquire about the, I'm sorry, perhaps I, I missed the, the fac- the facilities, the, you referenced master facility plan?
Evaluation.
If, if I may, Madam Chair.
I shouldn't have put that in there. I, I repeated that.
I don't believe that was a part of the motion.
Okay, that's why I asked her to reread it. Thank you, Ms. Thank you, Mr. Vice Chair. So as Mrs. Uh, Page stated, so noted. And it's right now looking at me. Improve the ESSR grant funding as amended to include fourteen million, eight million in FY twenty twenty-two and six million in F, um, FY twenty twenty-three.
And, and Madam Chair, I believe the, Ms. Page would like to address, address the group. I saw a note from her.
All right, Ms. Page?
Yes, so um, again, I have, I do have some questions um, as we go forward such in, such as in the learning facility. I think it'll be critical that we get the breakdown of um, where those facilitated learning centers are. Because again, I want to ensure that it's equity across the board. We have childcare, south side, north side, east end and west end. But I want to make sure that those centers are where they are needed the most. And.
Thank you, Ms. I'm sorry.
And then I want to also have, um, have a question, Superintendent. Cause I saw where you had expanding. Um, I probably don't have her name right. Casa. Grande? So.
Kunganas.
Kunganas.
Kunganas. It's a.
You can tell my um, my Spanish. I'm limited. Um, but are we, are there plans to expand the student success center?
Yes.
That's one of my questions um, for when we come back. Because again, I want to ensure there's equity resources across the board and where it's most needed. Thank you.
Are we ready to vote? Madam Clerk?
Ms. Dorr?
Yes.
Mrs. White?
Yes.
Mrs. Gibson?
No.
Mr. Young?
Aye.
Ms. Rizzi?
Yes.
Dr. Harris Mohammed?
Yes.
Miss Sher- Mrs. Cheryl Burke?
Yes.
Mrs. Dawn Page?
Yes.
And Ms. Joan?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Madam Chair.
I'm sorry, I see. I'm sorry. Thank you. Thank you very much, colleagues. I will look forward. We all look forward to our children's needs being better met. And we thank you so much. Um, best to our administrative team and having ample time to get that in and not to wait till the last day. Not that you'd do that. But I'm just happy that you have the time to work on that and to submit before April one. All right, if we can move along with the agenda, the next item. Well, we did that. Received for action FY twenty-two twenty, excuse me. Okay, this is, I'm sorry. It's a different one. Yes.
Madam Chair, I'm sorry. I believe the superintendent requested opportunity to address the group.
Thank you. And then we'll move forward to number four. Thank you, Mr. Cameras.
Uh, just two quick notes. One, I just want to say thank you to the board for approving the spend plan. I am uh, very excited to get this over to the state and then uh, receive those funds so we can begin uh, the work in earnest. So I know there were some difficult uh, trade-offs to be made and I truly appreciate uh, the board's support for this action. Um, one logistical note, I think, Madam Chair, you just uh, recognized this. I think the next agenda item we have, we have taken care of. So I think we can, we can now. And I think that takes us then to the JCT update. Is that correct?
Yes, um, no, no, we changed the agenda, remember. But Mr. Cameras, if we may, colleagues as well, I'm, 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 I'm very pleased to have this opportunity to have some funding. So I, I just give a shout out to everyone in the community that, that wrote in support of knowing that we need to make our buildings clean, safe, up to date and knowing that our children deserve instructionally and the whole nine yards. Our teachers deserve to have up-to-date our science labs, the whole nine yards. So I'm excited about this. And you know, I'm one that believes in celebrating. So thank you, thank you, thank you, thank you. Whether it's one year, two years, it's going to be better than what it is right now this year. So I sincerely thank you all for um, putting that, not hesitating in terms of putting our children first and making sure they receive the support and we can't do it without the funding. So I'm thankful, I'm blessed. I guess it's, is that okay for me to say I'm blessed, Ms. Lilly? Okay, legally, okay. All right, well, I said it. Thank you. Amen. All right. Number five is the board business. We added that, Mr. Cameras. Five premises, um, Gibson, five point zero one, Maggie Walker Transportation. Ms. Gibson, do you want to start us off with that?
Um, sure, I, I can. Uh, thank you, Madam Chair. Uh, so uh, it's my understanding that um, the two governor schools, Maggie Walker and Appomattox, um, their regional boards voted to move forward with in-person learning as of March fifteenth. And um, as a district, uh, it was uh, my understanding uh, and you know, as a, as a board member and, and as a parent that, um, that you know, transportation was a, a large factor um, in, in making the recommendation to remain virtual. Um, you know, as I completed the survey, it noted that um, you know, do I want to send, you know, to remain virtual? And it noted, you know, with the understanding that, that we would not be able to provide transportation. And so um, in communication that has gone to parents of the governor's school students or students at the governor's school, um, uh, it, it implies that there will be transportation that's offered for those students. And um, you know, I want to be clear, um, you know, I, I am, I'm torn on this, but I, I am concerned about um, perceived inequities if we are offering transportation to students at those uh, select schools when we had stated that there would not be transportation um, throughout the district. So um, I was just hoping to get an update um, so that uh, uh, parents who are, are looking to make decisions are, are, are informed. Um, and we have a clear understanding as the district stands on this.
Madam Chair.
Please, please, Mr. Cameras, go right ahead.
Sure. Um, thank you uh, for raising this, Ms. Gibson. Uh, just to clarify, um, when we have talked about our inability to provide transportation, uh, we're talking about a division-wide uh, in-person option. We would not be able to provide transportation and maintain our food program at the same time. And I, I maintain that. Um, when we're talking about the governor's schools, which voted to uh, return in person this spring, uh, we felt we had an obligation to those students uh, to support them if they needed transportation to get to those campuses. I do want to note that the number of students we're talking about here is a very small number. We would not be using um, our own bus services. We would be using contracted services. And these are funds that we um, would normally be using to support transportation for those young people to those schools. So there's no added expense. So this is really about our obligation to those students, those schools independently governed by their boards have chosen to return in person. And so we are trying to do the right thing by supporting the young people and not having them pay the price uh, for um, decisions that are out of their control. And in fact, introducing an inequity if we didn't provide transportation and thereby um, in, in essence, making it more difficult for our lowest income students to participate in those programs if they wanted to do so. I believe Ms. Udasco may have some numbers from the governor's schools' initial surveys of staff. And so um, if you have that information available on Ms. Udasco, um, I would invite you to share it now, if that's okay, Madam Chair.
Yes, please. Thank you.
Sure. Um, thank you, uh, Mr. Cameras. So we have been in touch with the three uh, schools, cause I will include Code RVA um, in this conversation as well. Um, I'll just share as a proxy um, from Maggie Walker. Um, they have a sixty-five percent response rate right now from their students. Now, many of those students are not choosing to go back in person. So they are, of course, maintaining a virtual option. Um, of the sixty-five percent that had responded to date, which was about a hundred and thirty kids, ten requested bus transportation. So even many of the students who are returning in person, their parents will be driving them. So again, to Jason's point, um, we're looking at about right now, ten kids from Maggie Walker. And initial reports showed eighteen uh, students for Code RVA. We don't yet have a list from Appomattox. Um, but again, we'll be probably looking at, at some comparable numbers and we do expect to hear from them by week's end. Um, as we've, as, I mean, they're in touch with all contributing divisions, but we've shared our need for at least two weeks for routing. Um, and we are working, of course, with a contracted vendor who will maintain um, uh, all CDC requirements regarding the number of the kids on the bus, distancing, masks, um, et cetera.
Thank you. Um, is there anyone else, Mr. Young, that would like to address the transportation piece?
Not as of yet, Madam Chair. Madam Chair. Uh, Ms. Gibson has requested the opportunity to speak again.
All right, Ms. Gibson, the floor is yours.
Thank you, Madam Chair. And I appreciate the update on, on this. Um, you know, I would say two things. One, I, I think that as a, as a district, given the amount of scrutiny um, on this matter that um, you know, i- if we had this to do again, I do think that this would be an, an important discussion to have as a board. Um, and while it's not many students, um, you know, these are students that um, likely come from families with more means and, um, and there are inequities there. And yes, you know, it goes both ways. Um, but I do think that this is a discussion that would have been worth having. Um, and um, you know, I, I think also in, in retrospect, and look, I'm a person, I, I feel very strongly um, in support of, of going, of that we made the decision to go virtual. Um, I, I, I don't have any regret on that. Um, you know, I do think though, although I've made that choice, I also think it is incumbent upon us to have a clear plan. Um, but I, but I think looking back as we, as we um, made that decision in the fall, um, I, I do think that putting the note about transportation um, on the survey, uh, from my perspective, to, you know, tainted the results that we got. Because um, because we don't know how many people really would have wanted to go back and, and made that choice because of a lack of transportation, rather than making a choice on their position um, because they were concerned about the health issues. And look, again, like I said, I, I'm not sure that I would have voted any differently, you know? But I, I think to have told our families that there was definitely not going to be bus provided, um, and then we are providing it here. Something about that just doesn't sit well. Um, and so, look, there's nothing that we can do, um, you know, changing the past. But I think, um, you know, as a service to every student in the district, um, let's make sure we need to have a plan, um, a very clear plan so that, um, so that we can move forward and, um, and, and money at this point is no excuse. Um, and so, you know, let's, let's have something documented so that, um, so that the community feels assured that, that we can go back. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Gibson. Mr. Young, anyone else?
Yes, ma'am. Ms. White?
Ms. White? And Ms. White is our representative. Yes, Ms. White?
Uh, yes, thank you, Madam President. Uh, Mr. Cameras, I wanted to know, just bringing that up, cause I also uh, was told that there was uh, no uh, transportation at first. Uh, but now I see that there is uh, ti- uh, contract services. Have all the families been somehow notified that now there is um, transportation, contract transportation, just in case they want to change their mind because they didn't have transportation? transportation, contract transportation, just in case they want to change their mind because they didn't have transportation at first?
Mrs. White, are are you referencing uh, students at the governor schools?
I am. I'm on that board. That's that's the one I'm representing. Yes.
Yes. My understanding is that at least um, at Appomattox, or I know Mr. Young, I believe, is is the representative. Um, he was able to convey that we would attempt to identify and means of providing transportation. So I I do believe that was um, part of their decision. Um, uh, Mr. Young.
I'm talking about Maggie Walker, Maggie Walker.
Looks like Ms. Udasco may have more information on this.
Yes, um, the schools reached out to each of the contributing divisions and we did tell them from the beginning that if they chose to have an in-person opening, um, that we would find contracted transportation. So that had always been part of their decision-making and any of their students had always been informed that they could use division transportation if their school, if the school chose to um, move to an open status.
When was that last told to them? Because I had a actual meeting with them last Thursday and my next meeting is this Thursday, but last Thursday, that was not told to them, because that was mentioned to me.
Um, unfortunately, that uh, I would suggest is is was inaccurate information. Unfortunately, I've been in communication and as has our uh, this our uh, transportation director for several months, well into last year, when they were initially considering reopening. So this has been on the table uh, four months.
Okay, I will, I'll follow up on Thursday.
Happy to connect with you offline on it, too.
Thank you.
Excellent. That's that's a great idea. Thank you so much, Ms. White and Ms. Udasco. Mr. Young, anyone else before we move forward?
Yes, ma'am. Ms. Rizzi.
Ms. Rizzi, the floor is yours.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I think, you know, with this, to me, um, just exemplifies is that we have issues with transparency. Um, you know, if Ms. White wasn't aware of this, um, it appears to me that um, both representing that school and being on the board would, you know, at least allow her to be copied on decisions that are made like this. And um, I think the public should know that, you know, certain schools now, I mean, certain students now are getting transportation and here is why. But again, you know, we have this situation where things aren't transparent. I mean, these things, the public should know. At the bare minimum, Ms. White should have known. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Rizzi. Anyone else, Mr. Young?
No, ma'am.
All right, the next item on the agenda is four point, excuse me, five point zero two legislative update. I know that Mr. Stanley is not with us tonight. Is that correct, Mr. Mr. Cameras?
That's correct. Um, is this the item that Ms. Gibson had added?
Yes, Ms. Gibson, would you like to address? Yes, please, Ms. Gibson, go ahead.
Thank you, Madam Chair. So um, I I'm assuming that you all, uh, as I did, woke up and and, you know, read the article either in our local paper or the Washington Post or what have you, uh, regarding the conversation happening right now um, at the General Assembly. Um, so I am, I'm referring to the bill um, that had initially been introduced by um, by Donovan and then was amended by um, uh, spoiler that, can't speak, but um, uh, related to um, to reopening. So um, originally, the bill uh, was an emergency bill that would require in-person learning. Um, and that bill was then amended to require in-person learning as of July one. Um, and um, uh, I I I, my ask tonight is that the board consider taking a position um, in in opposition of this bill, and I can uh, like to express my my points. Um, I have uh, I have heard, uh, I I did speak to uh, Delegate Bourne. And um, I do believe that uh, he and perhaps some other members of the um, the the Black Caucus uh, do have concerns with the bill. Um, essentially, what it does is uh, usurps local authority on making decisions. And while I believe uh, this body is um, you know, is of the belief that we can go back to school, um, you know, perhaps more as normal or whatever normal looks like in the fall. Um, it does concern me that this bill would uh, would would mandate that. Um, and with the understanding of, we don't know what things are going to look like months from now. And so, you know, the the uh, General Assembly will adjourn, they will pass this bill and then um, and then should have something happen in terms of the development of the pandemic. Um, you know, it would require an emergency regroup to then undo that. Um, so so that is a concern that 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 I have. There are no dollars attached to this bill. Um, and I believe that um, it essentially uh, allows the possibility that, say, a a teacher is sick um, or if a student wants to do virtual, it doesn't mandate it, the language is the district may provide. But um, but essentially encouraging the um, kind of having parallel options of both a five-day-a-week in-person option as well as um, as a virtual option. So then, you know, as a district, we 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 would be encouraged to essentially have two um, two systems on the table in order to be able to do that. Um, and so uh, you know, I think that we have unique needs as a district here in Richmond. Um, I do believe in the authority that was given to this board by the constitution, um, by the state constitution. Um, you know, I'm I'm always concerned when we see legislation that does not have dollars attached to it. Um, I am still concerned about the access to vaccines amongst all our staff. Um, you know, so from my perspective, my hope is, is that we can reopen um, and have as normal a school year as we can, but I have significant concern with this bill. And I do believe that um, it would help our uh, our local delegates if this board were to be in support. Thank you. Of be in support of not being in support. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Gibson. And that was um, a shock for me as well this morning. I'm sure all of you have seen that in the paper this morning and on on um, the notifications that come across your phone.
Madam Chair, you are muted.
Thank you. What I was saying was, thank you, Ms. Gibson, for bringing that to our attention. When I read that this morning on the front page, I too was surprised and also deceived the notifications listed, and as you stated, um, even having that discussion with no funding uh, attached to it, it is just just doesn't make for a win-win situation. So I'm asking at this time, is anyone else that would like to speak to that? And then we we can, it's not um, an action item, but we can make a recommendation per se in terms of how to move forward. Is there anyone, Mr. Young, that else would like to speak to that?
Madam Chair, not as of yet.
What about you, Mr. Young?
I would gladly speak to it. I would uh, I would only uh, I would only share that uh, if the General Assembly was uh, was more serious uh, about uh, about what constitutes uh, uh, most important issue for uh, for tens of thousands of families across the Commonwealth, they would have included an emergency clause uh, to provide for uh, school this spring in lieu of uh, in lieu of next next year. I support support the bill. It's a bipartisan effort. I think it's uh, not going to surprise anybody on this call when I share that uh, believe it's incumbent on us to get our our young people back into school, those students, um, and their families that that choose to opt in and those teachers and staff that choose to to opt in, to do it sooner rather than later. So I I'm uh, unlike my my colleague uh, from uh, from the third who I uh, uh, respect uh, more than I can, I can tell you. I have a difference opinion on this legislation and I um, I believe it's a little bit too late, but still, I I'm supportive of it and uh, uh, would look forward prayerfully before the assembly ends to inclusion of that emergency clause. I uh, to take effect prior to July one, but um, don't anticipate that that will will happen.
Thank you, Mr. Young. Thank you so much. Let's keep it balanced. Mrs. Gibson, I believe, has a follow-up. Did I read that correctly, Ms. Gibson?
Yes, I just wanted to also let uh, my colleagues know that um, that this is time-sensitive. I believe this vote could happen as early as tomorrow and possibly Thursday. So if we were to take a a an official position as a board, we would, we would need to do that um, at our meeting today.
Um, Mrs. Lilly? Where's Ms. Lilly? There she is. Would that be considered as board action? Because right now, this is falling under board business.
I mean, it would be um, certainly if if a motion is made, then the board, it would have to be carried through. Um, it, tha- that's just a a um, in the position of where it is, it's board, it's considered board business. And if a motion is made, then it would have to be carried through. Um, it was added to the agenda.
Question for you. What um, happens if we make a recommendation? Then we would not have to move that from there. Couldn't we make a recommendation in terms of?
If the
Is that possible?
If the question is whether you can vote because it's placed in board business, the answer is if a motion is made and carried out and seconded, then you can, you can vote. It's up to the the majority of the board to do that. Um, the placement of it um, for the semantics of the title, um, you know, was just to put it on the agenda. But if there's action that's necessary, it could, you know, conceivably be moved around and and be named now board action. But um, that's only if a motion is made.
So um, colleagues, this this is just from um, my perspective. Either we can get a motion tonight to be in agreement or not in agreement, or fully understand what's going on, or to make a recommendation for um, Matthew Stanley, our legislative um, lobbyist, to address this for us per our recommendation. What, does that makes, does that make sense? Ms. Lilly?
Um, if you're making, if if you're going to make a recommendation, you would have to reach some type of consensus to make that recommendation.
Right.
Whether that's by motion to have Mr.
Okay.
You know, make
Okay.
To direct Mr. Stanley into what you want him to advocate for or against in this issue. So it's
Got it.
Motion to take some action either way.
Thank you so much. I'm looking to my left and my right, looking for the newspaper to read through it again. All right, um, any other discussion, Mr. Um, Mr. Young?
Not as of yet. Not as of yet, Madam Chair.
So colleagues, what's your position on this? Oh, yeah, I have it right here. I have it right here on the front page of the paper. But I'm not going to read through that because we all, so what's what's your position, Ms. Gibson? Um, what's what's your position on this, since you brought this to our attention?
Madam Chair, this Gibson has uh, has made
The motion?
Uh, she has, perhaps she could share that out loud. And then Ms. Page uh, requested opportunity to speak subsequent, Ms. Gibson.
All right, Ms. Gibson, the floor is yours.
Um, thank you, Madam Chair. Thank you, Madam Chair. Um, so I I motion that the board adopt an opposing position regarding Senate bill, I believe it's Senate Bill thirteen oh three, and I I will double check. I want to make sure that that is correct, but um.
I have the paper in front. You said um, Senate bill, wait a minute, the House Education Committee approved a draft of S B thirteen zero three with a tighter definition of in-person as state health officials announce. Let me keep reading. What number did you state?
I said thirteen zero three, correct?
That's it. That's it. That's correct.
Okay, so
Is there
My official motion, my motion is that the board adopt an uh, opposing position regarding proposed Senate Bill uh, number thirteen oh three regarding in-person learning.
Is there a second?
Second.
Is this that was seconded by?
Rizzi.
Ms. Rizzi. Question, discussion?
Madam Chair, Ms. Page.
Ms. Page?
Yes, Madam Chair, um, I just would say amend, because I think we need to direct our lobbyists, um, Mr. Stanley to, to do the work, to provide that information um, for the board. But I mean, I definitely support it because we oftentimes receive mandates without funding attached to those mandates. But I would add to the motion that we direct Mr. Stanley to do the work.
Any other discussion or questions before the vote? Are we asked, and so that Ms. Page just stated to amend the motion, correct? To add to the motion that we take a stand regarding S B thirteen zero three per uh, Mr. Stanley doing the legwork. I'm not, it shouldn't be stated in that manner, but Mr. Stanley would uh, follow through on that tonight or tomorrow morning. Mr. Cameras, what's your thoughts?
Um, based on the board's action, I will reach out to Mr. Stanley and he'll take uh, whatever action the board stipulates uh, most likely tomorrow morning, given the hour.
Ms. Gibson, would you mind me stating that, um, motion to include that?
I don't, you know, I I actually prefer not to. I think that the motion is clear and that's his job. You know, so I don't know that it's necessary that the motion stipulate um, um, you know, what, that's what he, that's what he does. And anytime we 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 make a position on a, on a, on a bill, um, and so I I think we can proceed with the motion as it stands.
Ms. Page?
Ms. Madam Chair, I think we need to be very clear um, when we are making motions. So there, there's no misunderstanding, understanding of the motion, just as we deal with the ESSA motion. And I think some of our colleagues stated the importance of being clear on motions and so that the public is aware of what action that we are taking. Thank you.
So Ms. Lilly, where do we stand at this point?
Well, if Ms. Page is, um, if her intent is to make a motion to amend the motion that's on the table, then she needs to state that and needs to state how she wishes the motion to be amended. Then if there is a second to that motion, then um, you would need whether or not to amend, and then you would vote on the main motion.
Thank you. Who's listed to speak, Mr. Young?
Uh, Madam Chair, I believe yours truly, uh, unless I missed, missed someone. Uh, absent that, uh, and I recognize I spoke to it briefly before, uh, but just briefly, uh, to be clear, this legislation pertains to next academic year. I recognize that uh, the impetus for the motion perhaps uh, pertain to uh, to other variables, including uh, some that that have been stated and and specifically of local government controls. I don't want to diminish, diminish that whatsoever. But I do want to, uh, I do want for folks that may be listening in to to be clear that this bill, this legislation pertains to absent an emergency clause, uh, which uh, I I don't anticipate will be in included when it, when it reaches them, where the governor's desk. Uh, to be clear, this pertains to next year, uh, to next academic year, excuse me. Uh, I uh, I cannot fathom a circumstance, uh, God forbid, where we would not be back in school in person next academic year. Uh, I support this legislation and will accordingly vote that no. Uh, Madam Chair, I believe I saw Ms. Rizzi request opportunity to speak.
Let me ask you one question, Mr. Young. So this bill's sunset will be twenty twenty-two? Yes.
Correct. It is a, a sunset clause would pertain, would pertain to when it it expires. But the relevancy pertains to when it would convene.
Right. All right, Ms. Rizzi?
Yes, um, I I actually agree with, I think Ms. Page said this is a mandate that's given without any kind of Yes, I, I actually agree with, I think Ms. Page said this is a mandate that's given without any kind of additional funding. It kind of, you know, causes us to like, I mean, it, it, it basically blocks us from acting in ways that we may need to adjust in the future, not to say that we would. I mean, I am dying to get my son back into school. So, you know, I really want that to happen, but I don't know that we need to be under this kind of mandate. You know, I, I'm mostly also a little offended by how many times it looks like these legislators, you know, reference working mothers and employment when they made this decision. Because I know a lot of working mothers who are suffering because relatives have died from COVID. And it is affecting the communities that many of our single mothers are, you know, are in. And so I, you know, I just have some problems with it and would support this. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Mr. Young. Anyone else?
Yes, ma'am, Ms. Door.
Ms. Door?
Thank you. Just for transparency, I also, I will be voting no on this proposal. I don't want to signal that we are not laser focused on reopening in the fall. I do share some of my colleagues' concerns regarding state control over local boards, but I will also be voting no.
Thank you, Ms. Door. So we're between a rock and a hard place here, aren't we? This is, um, did I see someone else's? Okay, I'm sorry, that's, forgive me. Mr. Young, anyone else?
No, ma'am.
All right, so question, Mr. Cameras? In regards to Matthew Stanley, Matthew Stanley's title, what is his title again? He is the
Of advocacy and outreach, and, and he's happy to proceed with whatever the board decides tonight. And no further language or instructions are necessary. He serves at the pleasure of, of the board's direction. So we're ready to roll with whatever the board decides.
All right, he does such a great job, just like he did this past weekend regarding what took place with the rally on Monday. But he does such a great job of explaining everything step by step by step. And there's information here that's not in the paper or whatever else that I would really like to hear more of. And usually he's, he's helping us with our Zoom process. But I know if he were here, if we had asked him to do this, he would have been ready to proceed. So we have a motion on the floor, colleagues, and we did not hear an amendment to that motion. It was recommended, but it wasn't a, a motion. So right now, Mrs. Gibson's motion and Ms. Rizzi's sec, I think Ms. Rizzi seconded it. And Ms. Page spoke of adding Mr. Matthew Stanley to the, to the motion for not only transparency reasons, but also as Ms. Gibson stated, that is his job. But we know then, if we make, as we, it will still be documented that we made a move tonight one way or the other. But he will be there tomorrow at the General Assembly Building. Correct, Ms. Cameras, or make direct contact with those persons. Whereas we won't be there tomorrow, well, I won't be there tomorrow at General Assembly Meeting. Maybe you all will be, however it's decided. And it is, I can understand both sides of this. I really can, in terms of school boards having that opportunity. But we've had a couple of things come up right now here, unfortunately, that we didn't have any say so over. And then I can also see the other side of it is, you know, we need to open the schools and keep the schools open. I see that as well. So Ms. Page, are you amending the motion or are you quiet?
Madam Chair, I'm good with the motion. As the superintendent stated, that is Mr. Stanley's role, so I'm good with that.
All right, so no other discussion. We are ready to vote. Ms. Gibson, would you be so kind again to repeat your, your motion and then we'll move forward?
Sure. I'm motion that the board adopt an opposing position regarding Senate Bill thirteen oh three regarding reopening as of July one, twenty twenty one.
And Ms. Rizzi did second it. That still stands as listed, correct, Ms. Rizzi? Yes, all right, madam. All right, no other discussion, madam clerk. We're ready for the vote.
Mrs. Door?
No.
Mrs. White?
Yes.
Mrs., excuse me, Ms. Gibson?
Yes.
Mr. Young?
No.
Ms. Rizzi?
Yes.
Dr. Harris Mohammed?
Yes.
Mrs. Cheryl Burke?
Yes.
Mrs. Dawn Page?
Yes.
And Ms. Jones?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you very much, addressing thirteen zero three per Mr. Matthew Stanley on tomorrow. Now we can move to six, section six, deferred items from our agenda on two sixteen twenty one. Colleagues, it is now nine nineteen PM. Six point zero one, receiving an update from the JCT joint construction team. Mr. Superintendent Camus?
Thank you, Madam Chair, and I will try to be speedy, given the hour. This document, which was uploaded, is now not quite current anymore. The most significant concern was the length of the punch list at Henry Marsh Elementary. There there were some direct conversations that we had via the city with the construction firm. They brought in a new project manager and we are now down to just a couple dozen remaining punchless items that are expected to be completed this week. So excellent progress over the last couple of weeks on that front. Cardinal and River City, their punch lists are essentially down to zero. There are just a couple of small things that they are wrapping up. As for the demolition process, Cardinal is furthest along. We should begin to see some actual demolition work by April. Marsh is after Cardinal and then Thompson would be after Marsh, but there are still assurances that all three of the old buildings will be down by this summer. So that work is proceeding. That's pretty much the, the update.
Mr. Cameras, I have a comment. First of all, of all the schools, we don't want any school to be behind the punch list. But I want to make sure our community is in agreement with the punch list that we've been discussing is regarding the new schools. And Henry Elmarsh, we've gone through it, as we have Cardinal and River City as well. But as, as Mr. Cameras stated, we, there's been some changes personnel wise at Henry Elmarsh because of the dissatisfaction of what's in place. And I'd like to personally thank Bobby Hathaway, our director of facilities, for being on point, on the spot every day and making sure every corner, every crack, every seal, every ceiling. When you pay that kind of money for a new building, as it stays here, one million dollars has, is, has not gone towards that company until we get everything on that list completed and completed well. So I, I commend, you know, sometimes we're so anxious to get something new, we just take it as is. So I'm glad that, it's unfortunate with COVID that we're not in the building. But the good thing is it gives us a chance to go through every item with a fine tooth comb. When we come back again, if not on March the first, on March the fifteenth, Mr. Cameras, we may want to get community support regarding the marquee that we've been discussing for each of the schools when it's time for, I know George Mason to go before Carr. I don't know about the other community, I mean, excuse me, the other two schools, what their neighborhood support will be in terms of their community persons that are around them. But I know for the eastern, well, not just the eastern, but the historic piece, which is not a big marquee sign, it's very small at the bottom that's being proposed. So it would be great to get parental, excuse me, parental support as well as faculty and staff in trying to make sure that we're following the guidelines and asking for permission, not for money, but for permission from Carr to be able to install that. So we can just, by the next time we meet, to add that before it's time to go to Carr to present our, if we get that opportunity, to present our stand on that as to why we want that.
Madam Chair, if I may, Carr actually rejected the proposal today.
What?
That was not that was not unexpected
Yes.
Their previous rulings. And so Mr. McIntyre is going to bring to us a few options to consider at the next JCT based on that.
Excellent. Well, let's keep our community involved. And it's okay, you know, if you get knocked down once, you don't give up. You keep going. The same thing was happening when we tried to build, start the building of, of, of doing away with the old Mason is, you know, we're keeping bricks from that to add to the facade on the outside. So we look for a win-win situation. But thank you for that, and I do want to keep the community up to date with that. In fact, I'll include that with our seventh district meeting. Mr. Young, did anybody have any questions or support, excuse me, questions or comments regarding?
Yes, ma'am. Dr. Harris Mohammed?
All right, Dr. Harris Mohammed, the floor is yours.
Yes, ma'am, thank you. Mr. Cameras, can you share with us the plans for Thompson Middle School? And can you educate us on what is a cure notice? Please understand, I don't know what some constructional terms mean, but if you could educate us on that, I really appreciate it. Thank you.
I, I didn't know what a lot of these terms were either when I started down this road, so I, I can empathize. A cure notice is in essence a notice to the construction firm that they will not be paid if they do not complete or cure the remaining items. I think we have largely resolved that issue at Henry Marsh. And so I think we're in a good space now. As for Thompson, the plan that the board approved was to demolish the old Thompson building and to, in essence, keep that space as green space until such time as the board decides what to do with it. And so we are actually going to look at site plans at the next JCT meeting to determine the precise pieces that will be demolished and which roadways and entryways should be demolished. But by and large, the entire structure and parking lot area in the back will, will be demolished.
Good, Dr. Harris Mohammed?
Yes, ma'am. I'm, I'm good for right now. Thank you.
All right, Mr. Young, anyone else?
No, ma'am.
All right, let's move next, five point zero two, receive an update on the Virginia Department of Education memorandum of understanding. Our EMOU. Mr. Cameras?
Thank you. I'll, I'll be very brief. We have a synopsis on Board Docs. We recently had some school quality reviews with various principals and Dr. App, Mr. Hughes. And we are working with the state to be responsive to their feedback. And then we have coming up on, I believe it is Tuesday, this coming Tuesday, is that correct, Ms. Udesco? Is our bi-annual MOU meeting with Superintendent Lane and Dr. Gecker, the president of the Virginia Board of Education. And so you should receive notice about that. And all board members are welcome and invited to attend.
Thank you, Mr. Cameras. And also colleagues, please try to attend that meeting. That's the first question. Dr. Lane, last. Did all the board members receive notice of this meeting? So I know some of you may have conflict with your work schedules, but if you can get off only for a few minutes, please do chime in for this meeting. It, it really makes a big difference when more than one or two persons are there. So, so we've extended this, this invitation. Have they already received the Zoom for that? I think, I'm not sure. Zoom request for that, we have. Okay, all right, Ms. Mariah White said yes. So if you can tune in, if it's for fifteen minutes or the whole hour or two, I cannot ask you enough and then some. As hard as we all work, we're working together as a team, along with the state, to make things happen, to keep the main thing, the main thing, and that is the needs of our children. So we need to be at the table as they are also auditing and evaluating what we're doing from day to day. Mr. Young, any questions or comments from anyone?
Madam Chair, if I may, I just wanted to note the time.
Please, what is it?
It's from two to three thirty. Again, that's Tuesday, March second.
Tuesday, March second. Oh, okay, excuse me, I'm sorry. Tuesday, March second, yes, two to three thirty. Yes, thank you. Any questions or comments, Mr. Young?
Madam Chair, Dr. Harris Mohammed?
I do not. My question was, excuse me, thank you, Madam Chair. I do not. My question was answered.
All right, thank you. And we're getting Mrs. Collins to resend that. I'm sure she will, the Zoom to remind us a day or two before. Five point zero three, receive financial statement for the period ending January thirty one, twenty twenty one. Ms. Udesco, is that you?
Yes, the documentation is on Board Docs and we are on track for usual spending for this time of year. I'm happy to take any specific questions.
Mr. Young, are there any questions listed?
No, ma'am.
Be it none, let's move forward to five point zero four. Receive for action board travel and district activity requests. Madam Clerk, Collins? Ms. Collins, you have that?
Yes, I do.
Ms. Collins, we can't see you.
Ma'am?
Where are you?
I'm right, can you hear me?
I can hear you right, just couldn't see you. Go ahead.
Okay. I have two persons, Ms. Doc, excuse me, Mrs. Cheryl L. Burke and Ms. Mariah White, who would like to attend the twenty twenty one BSBA Southside Spring Network Forum, which would be virtual on April the first, twenty twenty. The cost of that is a hundred and sixty dollars each. I have a district activity fund request form submitted from the seventh district, Mrs. Cheryl L. Burke, for Armstrong High School Choir Black History in the amount of three hundred dollars. And that's all I have, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. May I get a motion, please, to approve those requests?
I, I can, Madam Clerk. I didn't have a chance to put it in the chat, but I can grant the motion.
Thank you. And Dr. Harris Mohammed has moved that request to attend Virginia School Board Associations South Side Symposium or whatever be accepted in the amount of one sixty each and that that's Mrs. White and Cheryl Burke, yours truly. And then on, well, the Black History Month Program, Armstrong High School in the amount of three hundred dollars. May I get a second, please?
Second.
Thank you, Ms. Door. It's been moved by Mrs. Dr. Harris Mohammed and seconded by Ms. Door to approve. Any questions? Discussion? If not, let's move forward with the vote. Madam Clerk?
Mrs. Door?
Yes.
Mrs. White?
Yes.
Ms. Gibson?
Yes.
Mr. Young?
Epstein.
Ms. Rizzi?
Yes.
Dr. Harris Mohammed?
Yes.
Mrs. Cheryl Burke?
Yes.
Mrs. Dawn Page?
Yes.
And Ms. Jones?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you all very much for support and the opportunity. Five point zero five, receive a recommendation from the board auditor, Mr. Parker, regarding student activity fund procedures. Mr. Parker, it's yours.
Yes, ma'am. Good evening, everyone. So as you all know, well, some of you don't know, but we have been from internal audit. We've been rigorously working on SAF and trying to get that, that whole accounting procedure together and get it back in line to a good place since we started. And so from FY twenty, I'm going to share my screen. There were a few things noted from that audit at that time, which one of the big things was inactive accounts, if everyone can see my screen. which one of the big things was in activity or inactive, uh, accounts, if everyone can see my screen. Um, and just for the background here, uh, one of our recommendations here is just to show that we really want to move a, an inactive amount, um, at all schools is give a one-time recommendation to move around about fifty-six thousand dollars. Um, and this is just from the SAF from two, from, uh, fiscal year twenty twenty. Um, and so we noted about two hundred and three inactive student activity fund accounts, um, through about thirty-seven schools. Um, and our recommendation, I'm not going to read this whole thing, but our recommendation here is based on our support, uh, is that the board allow one-time transfer for, for the schools listed below to be able to move, um, fifty-six, approximately fifty-six thousand dollars. Now, what we do know is after they do their research, um, and, and do some research on these accounts, all of this money may not be moved because just even in today, I had a conversation um, with accounting that one of the schools wanted to keep the money. They wanted to hold the money till the schools got to the school, till the kids went back to school and for SOL carnival of some sort or some type of, um, incentive for SOLs for the kids to use. And so, but we want to make sure that money isn't just remaining in the student activity funds year over year over year over year. In, in this case, it was a, a right many accounts where the money was just sitting in the accounts um, for at least two years without being used. So we want to, um, make sure that this, this monies, these monies are spent down for the purpose intended, what is intended for for the school, um, whether it be, you know, old field trip money or, um, some type of fundraiser that was, you know, it was, it was funds that were raised a couple of years ago and now the money is just sitting there. And so basically, um, what you see here is in a management action plan, I'm working with, like I said, we're working with finance right now, but based on the board's approval, um, finance will work with the school, the individual school themselves and work on a spend down plan for the money that's already in the accounts and they'll, they will, they will fix that. And again, I will come back to the board after said, you know, after I get the actual recommendation or the actual management action plan and update the board as to how this is actually going for the schools. Our intent is that by, uh, June thirtieth of this year, twenty twenty-one, that this fund, that these, these inactive funds will be either accounted for with some type of reason as to why they aren't being spent um, and what schools want to do with them, or they will be dissolved and be used, uh, been utilized in another account. Any questions?
Thank you, Mr. Parker. Are there any questions, Mr. Young?
Yes, ma'am. Ms. Page?
Ms. Page, the floor is yours.
Thank you, Mr. Parker, for this information, but you pretty much answered the question that I had. What is a realistic timeline for you to come back and report to the board or update? Um, you know, with the status and completion.
Yes, ma'am. Um, so, so for the recommendation part, I, I, um, actually intended to come back around the first meeting in April, um, because we're actively working on it now with our first update as to how this is going. Um, in the meantime, what you all need to know is that we're actually out, um, as an audit shop, we're actually conducting in the schools what we call a turnover audit. Um, this is whenever a, a principal changes or a finance officer changes. Um, we go out and we actually review the funds in the school, the student activity accounts, PTA accounts, things of that nature. But we're always looking, right now, where it's about seventeen on the docket for us. Um, we've just finished up a couple and as we come back and report on those, we'll also include into one of these. And again, April, April, the first meeting in April, I don't know the date exactly. But the first school board meeting in April was when I planned to come back and at least give a, a first round update as to what the act, the official management action plan looks like, um, from finance and as to where they are with, you know, um, actually remediating or, or, you know, mitigating all of the things going on that will be recommended.
Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Page. Anyone else, Mr. Young?
Yes, ma'am. Ms. White?
Ms. White, the floor is yours.
Thank you, um, Madam President. Uh, Mr. Parker, I have two questions, so I'm just going to ask them both together. I heard that you said they can be utilized into another fund. Does that mean that they can be allocated into another, um, another, uh, fund? And my second question is, is there going to be some type of interfunding routine training? Because, uh, some schools do have a high turnaround, whether it's in staff or principals. Um, and I know you're going to come and audit them, but, you know, that might be a lack of training that they haven't received yet. And those are my two questions.
Okay, so yes, um, no problem. Um, so as far as question number one, the fund, they can only be, they can be transferred from fund to fund, but it has to be within the student activity funds. So it can't be for something outside of student activity fund. So let's say, and I'm just using, for example, I throw it out there. So you have a sports club, right? And the sports club is no longer operating, um, which we've seen that. Sports club wants to, maybe they have fifty dollars left in the account. They can then transfer that money to, oh, say, the drama club, so that the drama club can have money, but that has to be established, um, so that they can, you know, that's basically dissolving the money to another student activity fund, um, where the students are actually taking place, you know, they're getting, uh, the usage of the monies at that point, okay? Um, does, is that, does that answer your question for that?
Yes.
No problem. All right, so the next one is the training. Um, so with the training, so we offer a annual training. This just kicked off. This is a pretty, pretty new process for me. Um, and this is upstart, you know, we reinvigorate, uh, reinvigorating the process that was old, but it's happening now. So, um, kick off a training this year, brand new manual, everything. Um, and honestly, we work with finance to make sure all of the finance officers are trained. Now, when there's a turnover in the schools, the expectation is that the principal and/or the financial officer, whomever it is, needs to reach out to, um, finance. And finance does a one-to-one training with them, showing them how things will work. Now, that's a little bit different in the COVID environment, because before it was, um, accounting or somebody from that team would go out and they would actually train them one-to-one, right? Now it's more of a virtual thing. We have to kind of work through it with them, but they will work with them on showing them how to use the system and the software, uh, what things can and can't be done from that standpoint. Um, it does, it does, when you talk and speak to the turnover, it, it kind of puts finance in a bad place. Yes, it does, because they have to go out and retrain and retrain and retrain. But that's pretty much what it does. That, that's how the process works.
Thank you, Mr. Parker.
Yes, ma'am.
Any other questions, Mr. Young, Mr. Parker?
No, ma'am.
I have a comment to make. Mr. Parker?
Yes, ma'am.
You've been with us for how many months?
Uh, a year, uh, just over about sixteen months now.
All right, looking at this listing, this is what happens when you don't have proper, um, oversight. This is what happens because of, when I see schools that have twenty and fifteen and twenty different accounts and all the money is, should be going into the student activity account. But as someone just asked, I think Ms. White stated, when you have constant change of principles, a constant change of, of your financial persons and there's no oversight or no training. So I'm, I'm delighted that this, the, the board decided to bring this position back. And you get this straight, thumbs up to you, because thank you so very much, because this, this is not good. This is not good. When you, because we're always crying that we don't have any money, but when I saw somebody has up to twelve thousand dollars in their account, but they may not even know they have the twelve thousand dollars. So whatever you means of investigating, I, I thank you and your assistance, so very, your team members so very much. Because all student activity money is for student activities, whether it's for, um, the book club, whether it's for the pencil club, whatever it's for, it shouldn't be spread out like this. And that's what happened when we have change. So I commend you and I thank you for, when I saw this, I was like, whoa, I wonder if these principals even knew. Some of them didn't know, did they?
No, it, it's, it's funny that you say that, because a lot of the principals don't, and this is nothing against the principals. They walk, a lot of them walked into these situations. Um, and so because there were, there were, there was a lack of documentation, um, prior and previous to those principals being in the space, they just didn't know how to handle the money. Now, I will say, uh, Mr. Dasko and I, uh, the finance team, we, sometimes we're in a lot of meet, well, we're talking a lot at least, right, in some meetings and trying to get things hashed out as to how this thing really should work out. And I really, I'm really appreciative of that team, because the collaboration, I can see the collaboration happening, um, as well as us, you know, even though i- it seems like we're the bad guys sometime, but it's just the nature of it.
Well, thank you so very much again, Mr. Parker. This is proof in the pudding and we're talking about documentation. Here it is, folk. Here's the documentation right here. We look forward to moving forward. Um, we're ready to move to the next item. We don't need a motion for that, because it was just a report submitted, correct?
Um, I think it's a motion to approve the recommendation as a whole.
Okay, all right. Oh, I see it on the chat. Thank you. Ms. Page, you step ahead of me. Thank you, Ms. Page. Go right ahead.
No problem, Madam Chair. I make a motion to approve the recommendation from the school board auditor regarding student activity fund procedures.
Is there a second?
A second.
All right, it's the move by Ms. Page, seconded by Mrs. Dr. Har- Harris Mohammed to receive the student activity fund procedures report. Questions? Are you ready to vote? Madam Clerk?
Mrs. Door?
Yes.
Mrs. White?
Yes.
Ms. Gibson?
Yes.
Mr. Young?
Aye.
Ms. Rizzi?
Yes.
Dr. Harris Mohammed?
Yes.
Mrs. Cheryl Burke?
Yes.
Mrs. Dawn Page?
Yes.
Ms. Jones?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you so very much, um, Mr. Parker and colleagues. We now move to five point zero six. The first read, okay, this is the one we don't have to vote on. First read, an update to policy three dash three dot eight student activity funds.
Thank you, uh, Madam Chair, and I just want to again thank Mr. Parker. Uh, we have been working very closely to address the issues that have come up in the audits and, and the board's, um, uh, motion to allow that one-time, uh, rollover of inactive funds will be critical in reducing, uh, the number of citations we have next year, uh, or this year, excuse me. Um, another piece that we realized as we've been digging into this is just a very small, um, misalignment that is in our current policy. Um, while you'll see just a couple of line, uh, edits, the most important piece that we need to modify is the, um, change from five hundred to one thousand dollars uh, for the small purchases, uh, the student activity funds purchases. Um, our division level procurement processes, um, actually are at one thousand. So this policy should never have been cited at five hundred and I suspect it was just, um, an earlier oversight. Um, you'll also see just a couple of, uh, other very small changes which reference, um, our school board's internal auditor as well as what to do if an outside audit would ever be, um, required. So I'm happy to, um, take feedback on this over the course of this week. Um, and then can bring to the board on March first, um, this policy for a second read to incorporate any further feedback that you may have.
Thank you. Any questions or discussion at this time, Mr. Young?
Yeah, ma'am.
Thank you so much. Um, I can send my, I have a couple of items I want, a couple of days I'm glad to see. And a couple of things I have questions of, so I can send that to you if you'd like, Mrs. Um, Dasko, and I'll copy the board on it. The first one is under the handling and deposit of funds. I have a question about that. So I'll send that. I hope I don't forget. I know you'll remind me.
Madam Chair, I have a question. I just wasn't fast enough to type it. I too have a couple of questions, but I'm going to email them to you, Mr. Dasko, if that's okay. And copy the board as well. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you all so much. You know what I'm trying to do, you all, because we've been in meetings back to back, back to back, back to back. So I'm trying to make it back ten o'clock. So I'm, I'm pushing hard and I thank you all so much. We've, we've stayed the course. Thank you. The next one is five point zero seven, discussion regarding board standing committees. I know that, um, this is placed on the agenda, because there was a question earlier on regarding, um, adding some additional committees. And Mr. Young has been very instrumental in, in, um, um, pushing that effort in terms of making sure that's there. I know the policy is listed. Where's our attorney? Ms. Lily, would you like to go through the policy and then we can bill upon that? And I'm not sure, Madam Clerk, did you get a chance to add the other committees? No. Okay, we'll do that for the next meeting, for March first meeting. Just wanted to add the committees that you all have already signed up for, because a few of them, we still don't have your meeting dates. Most of them we do. So we'll make sure between, before Friday, you'll get a list what the committees are that you're already on. And I think a couple of you all are on committees that don't know you're on a couple of committees, um, because of many reasons of which I will share. So, um, right now, we need to address that policy and then we can move into discussion at this time or just receive this part as to what committees we want to add and what committees we want to not add at this time. Madam Attorney? Floor is yours.
Good evening, board members, and I hope everybody can see my screen. I think I did it. Am I sharing a screen that you see school board committees on? Policy one dash, okay. Um, and so basically, um, this is the, the current policy for, um, your committees. I'm trying to get it so that everybody can see it, but that may not work. But nonetheless, um, you, you will see that the, could, the committees operate as a committee of the whole, um, generally. Um, and that was a move from, you know, all, at one point in time, the board had a lot of different committees that were operating at the same time, but they went to a committee structure, um, of a committee of the whole and only standing committees for what was actually required by law to have a standing committee for. And at that particular time, um, the disciplinary committee was the standing committee of the board. So this particular policy outlines that generally the board would operate as a committee of the whole. They would have standing committees for certain purposes and the standing committees would be listed in the policy and the purpose for those committees would be listed in the policy. Currently, your standing committees of the school board include the disciplinary committee, which is three members, and your finance committee of at least three members. The policy also, um, states that there would be, um, from time to time, the board may, may see fit to add ad hoc committees, um, to tackle very specific tasks that the board may want to explore outside of the entire board structure. And that though, that particular, those committees would, um, again, only have the powers that are expressly granted by the board, which typically include making recommendations only to the board. Um, but that's the committee structure as is. And for your ad hoc committees, every time the board wishes to enact an ad hoc committee, a resolution, um, setting forth the title, the purpose and the structure of that committee would be needed, um, for the minutes, um, so that that, and, and you can, um, determine what the finite purpose is and after that finite purpose is passed, the ad hoc committee would, would cease to exist. So that's the framework of your policy. And, um, if you, if the board is entertaining adding standing committees, they need to be listed, uh, by the policy here. And ad hoc committees can be used for other smaller, um, finite matters.
All right, um, is, we're open for discussion at this point. Colleagues, we, we will make sure you also receive, because our list has been updated in regards to the, as you stated, finance committee and discipline committee, where there are only two per say that we must have, correct? So right now, in addition to that, we have one.
Well, I want to be clear, if I may, the finance committee, the disciplinary committee certainly, um, if you are, if you do not want to sit as a full board to hear disciplinary matters, then you're required to have a disciplinary committee. The board, um, designated the finance committee as another standing committee.
Right.
That was the board's preference. Everything else, those evaluation committees, the, um, the legislative committee, um, um, all the other committees that I believe are at play have been ad hoc committees, if I'm not mistaken.
Alright, and, um, I'm not gonna read through the list now, but I would like us to come back once we receive this other. Um, this, I, can you all recall, I know there was, uh, I know Mrs. White had a suggestion, um, Dr. Harris Mohammed had a suggestion, and Ms. Dour had a suggestion, I believe. Alright, so, Mr. Young, do we have anyone at this point right now that would like to, um, speak to that, so that we can look forward, and colleagues, FYI, currently, we have fifteen different committees and boards of which you all are serving on, we as a collective board are serving on.
Yes, ma'am. Dr. Harris Mohammed?
Dr. Harris Mohammed, the floor is yours.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Can you explain again the timeline for us, um, voting on this current policy as it currently reads?
This, uh, Mrs. Lilly, would you, I thought this is standardized by law, correct?
The policy, the, the framework is you are able to enact policies. That's the framework of the law. What you're, excuse me, you're able to enact committees, which is the framework of the law. The actual committees, that's up to the board. And this particular policy, um, I can give you the adoption date, which is listed on the policy. Um, it was adopted, um, and I, I would have to double check, because this, the formatting has changed when we went to board docs. But January sixteenth, twenty eighteen was the last, is the adoption date of the policy that's listed in board docs now. This policy was last revised July fifteenth of twenty eight, excuse me, twenty nineteen. And so, you know, the, the policy itself, again, um, there may have been some, um, earlier iterations of this particular policy prior to two thousand eighteen that just didn't track into this version of, of board docs.
Follow-up question, Madam Chair?
Please.
Thank you. Um, Madam Attorney, so, and it's probably for everybody too, not just you. So the committees that board members have suggested or recommended to you, Madam Chair, and Mr. Vice Chair, what is the timeline on discussion of those? Are we discussing those tonight? Because, um, the lateness of the hour, but I did present, um, the, according to the policy and the information, few, many, 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 many meetings ago, um, descriptions of the two, detailed descriptions of the two committees that I was recommending, and the board members, you know, because of many emails we have received since January, I do not mind forwarding that information for review. But I, I wanted clarity to make sure we were just in discussion and not voting on, um, committees and then the timeline, if you will. Thank you so much.
Um, if I may ask that, Ms. Lilly, did you want to respond first?
I was just gonna say, that's up, totally up to the board as to how you move forward.
Right, um, I, this is what I would like to do, and I do remember having received your, uh, explanation, and someone, I think Mr. Young also had, uh, synopsis per se of the existing board, um, committees. And I thank you all, everybody has signed up for some committees. So what I would like to do is to, not tonight, go through that. Um, I'm thinking about the same, the, okay, one committee was policy, correct? Help me to remember what they were. It was one policy and one was, wasn't one policy, Dr. Harris Mohammed?
One, one was, for me, human resources committee, yes, ma'am.
And, um, that's something we had talked about too, but I, I, we had talked about maybe human resources could be a part of the policy?
Yeah, but I was going to, yes, ma'am, because there's another division that has those two together, per se. So, but I didn't know that at the time that I sent the information when I did my additional research, yes.
Alright, and then Mrs. White had, Ms. White, what was your committee?
Uh, my committee was diversity, equity, and inclusion.
Alright. And Ms. Dour, you had a committee?
No, I don't have any new committees.
Okay. This is what I'm asking right now with the, getting ready for the, um, reopening plan. Um, I want, Ms. Dour, would you tell us what your plan is with the finance committee? Because I know you all have put everything on hold until we get straight with reopening of schools, getting our schools up to date. And, um, a couple of committees have decided, because not less is something pressing. There's a discipline committee, we know we must do that. And the Maggie Walker, the Code RVA, the Apromatics, we must do that. The meeting, the committee meeting with city council, we must do that. The educational compact meeting, we must do that. Community of caring. And Dr. Harris Mohammed, I, I need to share that with you. Um, those are things that we must do. The meeting with the mayor, um, things that we must do, but a couple of others, the vacant property committee. We have a lot, almost everything on here we must do, so let me stop right there. Um, okay, there's the only one, it's just really one right now that's still, we're talking about close to eighteen committees. So what I would like to do is to get with Mrs. Ms. Collins. And Mr. Young, when were you thinking about? I'm thinking about, maybe after spring break? Or maybe Mr. Mister, Mr. Cam, yeah, go ahead, Jonathan, thank you.
Yeah, uh, uh, thank you, Madam Chair. Uh, first, I just wanted to also remind the group that Ms. Gibson had proposed an audit committee for consideration. Uh, and as it relates to-
Okay, I didn't know that, sorry. Where's Ms. Gibson?
Uh, so there were, there were four new, I'm, I'm reviewing the lists, the spreadsheet now. There were four new, HR, the policy, diversity, inclusion, and equity, along with the audit. And as it relates to chronology, uh, don't, uh, want to perhaps, uh, make any assumptions or infer too much from what Dr. Harris Mohammed said, but I, um, I'll take a stab at it and concur with her sentiment, i.e. that we need to do this sooner rather, rather than later, and would propose that we would, in fact, uh, that we would, in fact, adopt a new policy as a board to move away from the committee as a whole, uh, and add, uh, add the committees that, uh, that have been proposed. But, uh, but I do think sooner rather than later, um, as soon as, uh, uh, it, it seems to me as, as soon as perhaps the first meeting in April, we should, uh, we should have a deliberation to the entire, all the committees, including those, uh, proposed.
And by then, we should be pretty much done with not everything totally in terms of, but we should be in pretty good space in terms of returning to school and other things as well. And other items, we, we need to continue to move forward. So, you know, it's, it's March, February is gone, so, um, are you all pleased with that regarding changing that policy? Mrs. Lilly, the process for that would not be a lengthy one, correct?
No, I, I just, thank you. I was, um, going to ask to be able to add that what I need or for purposes of policy revision is what the intent of the board is, what the names of the standing committees will be. So that part is a first read and second read of your policy, just like we are doing tonight for the student activity fund. But the, the substantive conversation about-
Ms. Lilly, I don't know why, but you're breaking up on me.
The substantive conversation, can you hear me? Can everybody hear me?
I can now.
Okay, I'm sorry, the substantive conversa, what, what I was saying was that the process really is a first read and second read of the policy revision. That is work that is not difficult to do. But the work that the board needs to do is to have a conversation about, um, the, the policy, I mean, the, the structure of the committee as a whole. So we can fill in, you know, what committees need to be added, what committees need to be taken away from the standing committees or what have you. Now, I would also remind you that that list that you have are internal and external committees. And so a lot of those, um, on that list, you know, would not be, appear in the policy, because, you know, Code RVA or, you know, community, all of those are external, um, committees that, you know, are not board-driven per se, but you have representation on that. So the, the, the changing of the policy is not very difficult, but you do need to have some substantive conversation about what you want that to look like before we make the changes.
Alright, so, um, Ms. Lilly, can Mr. Young and I get with you? So we can put this together to either bring up before spring break or, and we'll put it in the board docs so people can have a first read, and we'll, we, we, give it, give us about three weeks, but not that, not March fifteenth meeting or March first meeting, because we're concentrating on, on opening. Is that okay?
That's fine, but the question, I guess, will also be, and I, and I guess it can figure it out in the, in the board revisions, and I don't know, and we can talk about it offline, is, does the board need to have a substantive conversation about the policies that are listed? Do they want them in the policy first?
Yes.
Then, add it in the policy, or are we just waiting for, you know, those, that's the conversation that I think, that I was talking about the board having.
Excellent.
And Madam Chair, Ms. Rizzi has a question.
Alright, Ms. Rizzi, floor is yours.
Thank you, Madam Chair. So I guess my question now is, you know, because I don't want to inadvertently miss any committee meetings that I might be signed up for. Do we have a list now of like, who's on what commi, what committees are existing and who's on which committee at this point?
If you please check your email, I just sent it to you.
Okay, Ms. Collins just said she just sent it to you.
You just sent it.
We have some, she sent it to, to us. It's just, nothing has changed. The only thing is, some of the dates are missing of when we're meeting. That's why I was trying, so in case, you know, more than one committee, which many of us are, and, um, we have a, we have two committees to add, Ms. Collins, so you're gonna get a, a updated one as well. Because the one I have in my hand right now is the one we looked at today, but as I looked at it just now, some committees were not listed, like the educational compact committee with city council, things such as that. But some, some committees, I don't have any dates listed, so.
Yeah, I'm asking because I don't-
If you all would be so kind, what's-
Yeah, I was asking because I've done some switching, and I don't know, you know, where that ended up, yeah.
Okay. Okay, I didn't know that you did some switching. Okay, we'll get it straight, Ms. Rizzi. So look at this, and then we'll do some emailing before the week is up.
Thank you.
Okay, does that work for everybody? And then we'll move forward after we finish the main thing, being, getting our students and schools ready, then we'll move forward. But any committee that, some committees you, we are already actively engaged in. Alright, so, nothing else for that item? Um, the next item on the agenda, seven point zero, four personnel items. Is that, oh, I'm sorry, I'm on March the first agenda, excuse me. Look, it's, wait a minute, excuse me, um, we did five point zero seven, excuse me, six point zero seven, now six point zero eight. Report from board members attending committee meetings and conferences. If you haven't looked at your board docs, please do so. Mr. Young has written up. An excellent, um, he's always on point with that. And there is a form that we want to use for that, colleagues. Mrs. Collins will send that out. We're gonna set, do you like the idea of everything being on one email? So you don't receive so many here and there? Does that work better for you with five or six attachments as opposed to single? Or does it matter? Good, thank you. Thumbs up. Thank you, Dr. Harris Mohammed. So we'll make sure that you all get that. Are there any announcements? Thank you for an excellent meeting this afternoon. It's ten oh seven PM. We took care of a lot of business. Mr. Camus, you have any parting words?
Good night, everyone.
Good, alright, good night all.